All absent, return. Go get them. Mayor asked me in the meeting, doesn't he? I brought this down, I don't know if you like using it or not. We have Troy Carr.
Troy, you doing the invocation, right?
Good evening, everyone, we will call the July thirty-one, two thousand and thirteen, Special City Council Budget Meeting to Order. First order of business is the roll call.
Estes. Peterson. Lewis. Doyle. Wright.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Nordstrom.
President.
Roberts.
Here.
Clayton.
Yes.
Laurenti.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Now we welcome Troy Carr from Faith Temple for the invocation, you're welcome to participate, but not required.
Let us bow our heads. Dear God, we thank you for this day, we thank you for life, health, and strength, and we thank you for the love that you have for us. God, I ask that you would bless this meeting on tonight, that you would give wisdom, and that these council persons would make decisions according to your will and their conscience. God, again, we ask that you would bless Rapid City, that you would bless South Dakota, and that you would bless the United States of America, in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I will turn the gavel over to City Council President Jerry Wright, who will lead day two of the, of the budget hearings.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we begin, last night, the hustle to get out of here was acceptable first day of class, but tonight, plan on staying a little longer because we're going to discuss issues, I'm sure, and we'll maintain our order of decor until formally dismissed and adjourned. Thank you. With that, we will begin with our airport, Mr. Cameron Humphreys, please.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening, man, that's loud, am I blowing everybody out here? Get that down a little bit. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to present this, this budget to you. One of the things that is really important that, that we do as an airport, obviously, is put our budget together, and I'm going to kind of go over a little bit of the process. The, the airport, as you know, is governed by a five-member board appointed by the mayor and then confirmed by you for a three-year term. Specifically, most of the authority that the council has to manage and operate the airport has been deferred or delegated to the airport board. One of the only things, there's a couple of things, but one of the only things is actually the approval of the budget, hence why we're here this evening. But I will tell you that the staff prepares the budget based, in cooperation, obviously, with the finance office and the mayor, in their directions, but it goes before our airport board, and our airport board actually has budget, a budget hearing, and then after that budget hearing, a draft budget is submitted to the mayor, and then that budget then is incorporated to the larger city budget. The budget that you have before you for the airport is the same budget that the airport board approved and forwarded to, to the council. The airport employs thirty full-time employees, including seven full-time firefighters, we have a, an agreement with the Rapid City Fire Department, they provide our firefighters for crash, fire, and rescue out at the airport. We are also a self-funded, a self-funded enterprise, which means that our operations and maintenance costs are funded through airport tenant user rates and charges, and our capital improvement program is primarily funded through FAA grant and fee service programs that we have at the airport. There is an exception to that, and occasionally, there is an exception. The, the only time that, that the airport comes to the city looking to help with capital improvements are those capital improvements that are outside of eligibility for federal grant funding. Good example of that is, is the current water main that is being constructed out at the airport. We cannot complete, or that, I'm sorry, is not eligible for capital funding, and so that is being funded by the city. Another recent example of that, we received three and a half million dollars from the Vision Fund to complete our terminal building for the ineligible costs for federal grant funding. Otherwise, we are a completely self-funded enterprise organization. In addition to that, perhaps more importantly to you, the airport pays the city for its services. We pay a hundred and five thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars in interdepartmental charges, that's for finance, HR, legal, and IT support. In addition to that, we also pay a little over five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars a year for firefighter wages and benefits, so those seven firefighters that, that we have out at the airport, we pay all of their wages and benefits and their travel and training. The airport is also extremely efficient. Our cost per in-plane passenger, what we do is we take our, our total cost and we divide it by the number of passengers that we have going through our facility, is four dollars and fifty-three cents, the national average is ten dollars and forty-two cents, so you can see that we're a pretty efficient operation. A couple of highlights for the airport recently, the airport has had perfect FAA inspections for the last five years with zero discrepancies, that's fairly unusual. That led to us receiving the FAA Great Lakes Region Airport Safety Award in two thousand and eleven, and the airport also has received our trade organization's Excellence in Training Award for the past three years. Some statistics, you know, you've, you've probably heard or read about declining passenger employments, one thing that I wanted to show here is, is that the, the blue line that you see right here, that, you can see that passenger employments have actually, have dipped over the last two years in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, but not very much from our high point in two thousand and ten. Right now, we are forecasted to actually be up five percent this year over last year, and also, you've probably taken note that, that airline ticket prices have risen, and indeed, they have, certainly, they have at Rapid City Regional Airport, but they've risen nationally. I just got a report on airfares in the Great Lakes region, that's eleven states in the middle of the country, and the average airfare increase was five percent year-to-date, and ours been, ours has only been three percent. So yes, the fares have gone up, but they are below what the regional averages are. Well, I guess I need to clear this, hold on here for just one moment. We'll talk briefly about our operations and bu, operations and maintenance budget, although we've submitted one budget, I wanted to break this apart because there is some differences here. The airport actually has five funds, but within those funds, one is really the, our primary operations and maintenance, our enterprise fund, as we call it, and the other four are capital budget, or capital funds. For our operations and maintenance budget, in two thousand and thirteen, we submitted a budget of a little over four million dollars, four million, fifty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars, to be exact. This year, we're recommending a budget of four million, five hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two, so it's an increase of five hundred and, a little, well, just shy of five hundred thousand dollars. The increases are due to wages, salaries, and benefits, insurance, but the overwhelming increase comes from the rental car quick turnaround facility. But I will make note that by agreement with all of the rental car companies, this is going to be passed through costs, so in other words, we're managing the facility on back behalf of the rental car, but we have agreements in place that they are going to pay us, reimburse us for those costs, plus administrative fees for managing that facility for them. So even though you're seeing an increase in the overall budget, the revenue side is going to show an equal increase as well. To give this some historical prefer, uh, from a historical standpoint, you can see that what we did is we took the, the last four years and we compared the budgets. The thing to take note is, is that over here, you see the total increases for total expenses. You can see that two thousand and fourteen, yeah, indeed, there is an increase over the last three years, that's primarily due to the supplies and materials that you see right here, and again, that is for the costs associated with the rental car turnaround facility. But you also see that there's steady increases in the salary wages, some on the benefits as well. However, you see that we've actually lowered the costs for professional services, interdepartmental charges have stayed very flat, which is good, we appreciate that, repairs and maintenance has been largely flat, and then, of course, utilities has gone up. So really, what we're seeing increases for this year, and over, indeed, over the last four years, has been primarily wage and salary benefits and utility costs, and then this year, again, we're going to see some, or I should say, for two thousand and fourteen, we'll see some increases for the quick turnaround facility. On the capital side, our two thousand and thirteen capital budget was four million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, our recommended capital budget is three million, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars this year. Now, this is primarily, these decreases are, are primarily due to what projects we actually have planned for two thousand and fourteen, and, and our anticipated grants. Our projects that we have on the books for next year are our airport master plan. We have a, a master plan that's required by the FAA that has a twenty-year time horizon, we look out twenty years into the future, and we forecast what increases in passengers, and rental cars, and parking, and flight operations, everything, all of the aspects of the airport, we look at the forecast out to twenty years, and then we determine what facilities and infrastructure we're going to need to accommodate that, and then we turn it into a twenty-year capital plan. That's what we've been operating off of, and, and our last master plan was done in two thousand and eight, and we're actually almost to the end of all of the capital projects that were listed on that master plan, so it's time to update that, so that's the big project that we have. We're also, on our capital plan, we have demolition of the old terminal building, and then turning that into aircraft ramp space and opportunity for, for hangar development. If you all know the, the airport, have been around for some time, that, that facility has been around for a very long time, since the nineteen sixties, I believe, and getting it torn down will be very beneficial to, to the airport and, and our, our aircraft out there. One of the things that we need desperately is more parking space for general aviation and cargo aircraft, and this will help to accommodate that. We're also looking to purchase a runway paint truck, and then some equipment and computer replacements in our capital plan for next year. We have on the books some expanded services that I wanted to bring to your attention. United Airlines has added non-stop seasonal flights to Houston, this is their second year, and I think that, that, that it's gone well, and we're very hopeful that they'll be back permanently, the first two years were really a trial run. The first year was, was, it was a good first year, but it was somewhat marginal, and, but this year, we're hopeful that, that it's going to be much better. United Airlines is also in the process of replacing most of their fifty-seat CRJs, those are regional jets, with their seventy-four, seventy-four-seat Q four hundreds. Allegiant has added an additional weekly flight to Phoenix, they've also added a larger aircraft, the Airbus three nineteen slash three twenty to its fleet, and then Delta has also, is in the process of replacing some of its fifty-seat RJs with a hundred and sixty-passenger MD nineties, the three nineteenth's, and then also larger ERJs. What all this means is, is expanded capacity, this year, we're forecasted to have about a thirteen percent increase in, in overall capacity, the number of seats available, and again, our forecasts are for about a four to five percent increase in the total number of passengers. Also, the terminal was completed at the, at the very beginning of this year, it was, the terminal expansion remodel project was completed, we were one point two million dollars under budget. We took that money and we reinvested it and actually rebuilt our short and long-term parking lots, they were in dire need of being rehabilitated, so we used that money to, to do that. We also built a cellphone parking lot, if you don't know what a cellphone parking lot is, is if you come out there and you're meeting somebody, it's, it's a chance for you to sit in that parking lot, wait for the call on the cellphone, so you can come up to the front of the terminal and, and collect your passenger. We added that. We also started the Airport Navigator Program, this is in cooperation with some of the tourist destination partners that we have in the Black Hills, and essentially, it's a person behind a visitor's desk out at the airport that can help you navigate our airport, or even indeed, Rapid City or the Black Hills. They're hooked into a reservation system, so they can make reservations at hotels, rental cars, attractions, they can provide directions, or help you find your lost baggage, so that's a good program, and I'm, you know, excited that, that this is in cooperation with these partners, they've put up money to help pay for that program. This year is really a trial run at it, we're going to experiment with it this year between, well, for the summer months, and then we'll reevaluate. Also, two aircraft maintenance shops have recently opened on the airport, two flight training companies have opened, and TSA has also recently installed some advanced imaging technology units. Looking ahead into the future, as I mentioned, passenger employments are forecasted to be up, I said five percent here, it's, it'd be somewhere between four and five percent, I believe. Capacity is forecasted to be up twelve percent this year. Our rental car quick turnaround facility will be completed and operational in January. This September, we're going to start a major runway rehabilitation project, we received word from the FAA that we got about a three and a half million dollar grant to rehabilitate both, both of our runways at the airport, that's really good. We, we built those runways in nineteen ninety-six, and we haven't done a major rehabilitation project, I mean, we've done some maintenance on it, but, but they need to be completely rehabbed. We'll start on that in September, and then we'll complete work next year, that will really set those runways up for probably another ten to fifteen years. We started the preliminary work on an airport master plan, I mentioned our airport master plan earlier, the, the FAA says that you should update your master plan between five and ten years, we're, we're in that, right in the middle of that, it's been about seven years since we've updated ours, so we're, we're starting on that. That will be an eighteen-month process. I wanted to let you know that we're also hooked into the com, the city's comprehensive plan, we want the concept, the city's comprehensive plan and the airport master plan to connect, to mesh well together. We also will be reaching out to you and other key stakeholders in the community, getting your input on what you would like to see, and get your thoughts on the airport as we go through that process. We're also updating the Wildlife Hazardous Mitigation Plan, and then, the FAA is doing a couple of things on our airport, one is they're installing a new antenna that helps us integrate into their new next-gen air traffic control system, and they're also installing some GPS-based aircraft approaches. What this means really is, is that the FAA is putting its money into the airport to upgrade it to the latest technology. We did have a couple of questions, and I know that Alderman Wright had, one was vehicle inventory, budget, and lease versus purchase. I will tell you that we have ten vehicles in our inventory, we do budget for them in our capital plan, we do, we have a vehicle replacement plan, and it depends on the type of vehicle, how often we replace it, but it's, but it is in our capital plan. We don't learn, we don't, I'm sorry, lease any vehicles, we purchase them all, primarily because a lot of our vehicles are eligible for AIP funding, and, and leasing isn't an option under that, it's a, it's an outright purchase. I think certainly in some circumstances, leasing is, you know, advantageous, it's just that our capital funding sources don't allow for it. Also, Alderman Nordstrom asked about a three-to-five-year plan for the department, we do, we actually have a twenty-year plan for the department, it's our airport master plan, and we're updating that as we speak. So with that, I will open it up to questions that you might have.
Thank you, Cameron, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Cameron, some of these new upgrades in, in terms of antennas and whatnot, will that do anything to decrease the minimums? We're quarter-mile visibility, will, will that help us to stay open better in inclement weather, and then I have a follow-up question to that.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Sure.
Excellent question, thank you for it. The short answer to your question is yes, and for the benefit of everybody, when you have a, a pilot that's flying an aircraft into a destination and there's weather, the instruments are what allow a pilot transition from, you know, instrument conditions, in other words, from the clouds to a visual condition. But each instrument approach has different sealing and visibility requirements, and the, one of our runways, runway one-four, has fairly high visibility and sealing requirements. And our crosswind runway doesn't have hardly anything on it because it's mostly a visual runway. So these instrument approaches, it's going to be on our, our crosswind runway, and it will lower the minimums, so people will be able to get into more advert, you know, they'd be able to get down in more adverse weather, and then, as the, the FAA transitions more to this next gen, that will be the idea, is to continue to, to be able to lower these minimums, so yeah, this is, this is a great first step, so excellent question.
Do you mind speaking numbers at all, Cameron, it's quarter-quarter, isn't it, is that the?
Well, so our primary runway, our commercial service runway is one-four-three-two, runway three-two is the runway that we have the lowest minimums on, and it's a, it's a quarter-mile vis and two hundred feet. So in other words, you can fly the, the aircraft in clouds all the way down to two hundred feet, and then, once you break out, you have to have a quarter-mile visibility. That, that minimum probably won't lower, that's, those are pretty low minimums. On the other end, we're at six hundred and a half, eventually, we would like to get that runway down to where two hundred and a quarter on that one.
Okay, and then, as a follow-up question, you, you talked about runway rehab.
Mm-hmm.
Could you describe that process a little bit, are we talking about concrete degradation, and, and then taking out patches, and, excuse me, as opposed, perhaps, to just rubber removal on the landing zones?
Yeah, thank you, another good question. So the primary runway is concrete, again, it was built in nineteen ninety-six, and, and it's actually a system of concrete panels, they're about twenty-five by twenty feet, twenty-five feet wide. Between each of those panels, there's, there's actually a material there that allows those panels to expand and contract, they're called joint seals. Every so often, you need to replace those joint seals, somewhere around fifteen to twenty years, depending upon the weather, because if you don't, and they degrade, then what happens is, water gets down below those panels, and then the water contracts and expands and starts cracking the runway. So we're going to pull out all the joint seals in the entire runway and replace them with new joint seals. There is some cracking, but I will tell you, for a runway that's of its, the age that it is, that's, it's relatively minimal. There is a section that's the overrun, it's not part of the landing surface, it's about two hundred feet long, two hundred and fifty feet long, to be exact, on the end of the runway, that it's, the concrete is a little bit, it's not as thick, and it has cracked and started to heave, so we're actually going to remove and replace that. We're going to strip all of the paint off of the runway and completely repaint it with fresh paint. There are feeder taxiways, that's the, like, the little, I'll use road, but it's a taxiway, little routes that you go from our primary taxiway to get onto the runway, that actually have some asphalt remaining from pre, you know, from years past, we're going to pull that asphalt out, put new concrete in. We are gonna also do a, you know, fix any cracking that we have on the runway, and then the crosswind runway that's asphalt, we're going to put an emulsifier down there, a reconditioner on that asphalt to, to give it new life, and then repainting it that entire runway. So it's a pretty extensive reconditioning of that runway.
Steve.
Thank you, Chair. Cameron, I just had one question on the quick turnaround facility.
Sure.
Those agreements, are those contractual agreements, or are they just?
Mr. Chair, if I might? They are indeed, another good question, the, so the, the quick turnaround facility, to give you a sense of it, right now, all of the rental car companies have their own detail shop and wash facility and fuel facility, and it's not co-located with, with where the rental cars are actually staged for the customer, they actually have to drive further into the airport property to, to do that. Those facilities have degraded to the point to where they really need to be torn down, and actually, we, that, that ground is going to be utilized for future development, for aviation purposes, because, believe it or not, even though western South Dakota, there's a lot of flat land out here, we happen to be up on a mesa and we're landlocked, so every bit of flat ground that's even with our runways and taxiways is valuable and precious. So what we're going to do is, we're going to actually take all of their facilities, tear them down, and build a brand-new facility that's combined. It's going to make it a lot more efficient, because now it's one building, there'll be four detail bays and two wash facilities, we're putting a water recycling system in there, so that's going to be better from a water flow rate, and then also, we've got a sewage lagoon to handle all of our sewage, so that will actually decrease the amount of water we're, we're putting into that facility, and, and the, it's about a three-million-dollar facility, and that seems high, but you have to understand that it's the entire campus, it's a, you know, the detail bays, the two car wash facilities with all the equipment, underground fueling station, or a fueling station with underground storage tanks, as well as all of the asphalt and, and all of that. That capital improvement was, going out to do that capital improvement, was in agreement with all of the rental car companies, a contractual agreement to go out there and build it on their behalf. So we built it, and then we put in an agreement into place, a contractual agreement with each of them, saying, we will manage this facility with you, but, or for you, but you're going to pay for the full cost of that facility.
Other questions? Amanda.
Cameron, I also noticed in the budget that you've got over, slightly over a four-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in oil, fuel, is that part of that facility, then?
Yes. Yes. I'm glad that you noticed that. So, right now, the rental car companies own their own underground storage tank for fuel, and they're, they're doing all of their fueling. We're transferring that over to the airport. So what we'll do is we'll manage that fuel facility on their behalf and pump the fuel. We're going to have a small administrative fee on top of it for managing that on their behalf, but that's why you see that in the budget.
Other questions? If not, thank you. Chairman of the Board, do you want to say anything?
We always thank you for your support, everybody here. And I think you can see by your department head, your executive director, and your deputy as well, that they run quite a facility. And it's nice to know that we see around the city's citizens aren't having a shit to fill, that it enterprises itself a job well deserved.
And you also hosted the AAA EF, whatever it is, the conference last week with three-hundred-plus guests?
Yeah.
Good job.
It was, it was a great conference. Three-hundred people from all over the Great Lakes region, airport executives and their family came, and they stayed in our community from Thursday till Sunday. Some stayed more and some actually arrived earlier. They all raved about our community. So you should be proud of, you know, our community and what you all are doing around this table. So I appreciate that. And I, if I could just take a moment, I will, I will tell you that I want to give thanks to Tony Broome. She is my Deputy Director for Finance and Administration. She's the one, you know, she, she's the one that's behind the scenes, doing all the work, putting all these numbers together, preparing it for our, for our board, and then getting it forwarded to you. So I wanted to say thanks. And then, thanks to Lisa Modric for her leadership and guidance on the airport board. The airport is in good hands with her, so thank you.
Okay. With that, thank you. Our next guest of honor is our Police Chief, Chief Steve Ellender. We have a round of applause for our chief.
You know, Cam said, he said, "I'm going to take five minutes. I'll be really quick." And so... I just want to say, now I know why all, everything's delayed out at the airport.
Takes a lot of air to get an airplane off, you know?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to simple this back up for you. Cam, Cam did a great job. Let's see if I can do, do a little bit more basic than that. So, I'm here to tell you about the Police Department budget, of course. And I have a clicker. Bummer. Told you. There. Okay. What I'm presenting is the basic budget needed for operations and human resources within the Police Department. The wage increases you see reflect union contract negotiations and the changes that are, were pursuant to those negotiations. The temporary wages item you see in there is, the majority of that is for airport police officers, and there is some limited part-time help. The majority of the airport police officer wage is reimbursed by the TSA. There's a significant increase in worker comp this year from seventy-seven thousand in two thousand twelve to an estimated two-hundred-and-eight thousand in two thousand fourteen. So that's a big jump. Pauline tells me that they've been increasing the fees steadily for the last couple of years and that it may not, may or may not be related to any specific event, but it is no doubt up. You'll see in the budget, there's an increase in funding for the Working Against Violence, Inc., from thirty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand. And I do know that the WAVI representatives are coming to Monday night's council meeting to give you an update on services. I'll just tell you from my chair that we use WAVI services every day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, without exception. And it provides a, it provides a life-saving service for us when we can separate victims from their abusive households. And there's much, much more to that picture, but WAVI would do a much better job explaining the value. I'm just here to tell you that for a hundred thousand dollars, this is money well-invested in the community. So you'll see a total budget increase of five-point-eight percent or over six-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. We're not the typical department to have capital, a capital program or a lot of capital-related projects. We do have a proposed remodel in the future for two thousand and fourteen. It's related to the county building project and a few different departments, county departments moving out of the Public Safety Building. That will allow Public Safety, Police and Sheriff's Office to expand within that building and add an estimate of around two-hundred thousand dollars on a fifty-fifty split with the county. In our budget, you will see wages and benefits of nearly eleven million dollars. Other operating costs, a little over one-point-five million, for a total of twelve-point-five million dollars. The main focus today, our main priorities today are combating violent crime and addressing quality-of-life crimes. That is the, what the Street Crimes Unit is primarily responsible for, the panhandling, the public drunkenness and drinking and home, crimes related to homeless people. And also pedestrian safety. And then our main focus is staffing levels and recruiting. We have a constant struggle to, to maintain our numbers. We test and hire at least two or three times a year, where generally, we were in a habit in the good old days of doing that once a year and being able to keep up. And, so that's a main, a main focus. A little clarification on our full-time employees. Four officers were added in two thousand and twelve by COPS Hiring Grant. That's Community Oriented Policing Services Federal Grant. Four other officers were added in two thousand and thirteen with this council's approval. One year ago at the budget hearings, you gave approval for four additional employees. Those have been added. Our current FTE counts a hundred and fifty, which broken down, that means a hundred and seventeen officers are sworn positions, thirty-three non-sworn support staff. And that includes clerical, evidence technicians, scientists, parking enforcement, and that type of thing. As I said, violent crimes are a big, a big priority of ours. I'm just putting these numbers up here to show you that there, there is an increase and there, this is what's gotten our attention over the years, upward trend in violent crimes, specifically aggravated assault. So we have, we have a task force out every night trying to identify these offenders and, and get this taken care of. The property crimes are, are up as well. The thefts are up. The thefts, especially in two thousand and twelve, are way up. And I'll be talking about this further when it comes time to debate the precious metal pawn shop ordinance and so on. But I'm just illustrating that property crimes are up as well. And calls for service is really how we gauge how we're doing, how many times the citizens are calling us, how much our officers are able to initiate action on their own. And you see the yellow column here is the calls initiated by citizens, or they call us. That number is steadily going up from year to year, whereas the officer-initiated calls is up and down, but in the last three years, a downward trend, which simply means they're, they are attending to more citizen-initiated calls. So questions on PD budget? Yes, sir?
Mr. Chad Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, last year we talked about, and I'm, forgive me, I missed somewhere last year in the budget, but did we get the communications upgraded done? The tower you were having, you were going to communicate, you know, talking about?
The communications tower and all of the communications upgrades will come within the dispatch budget presentation, which in a minute I'm going to tell you is really best done at a different time by different people. There's been a good deal of confusion within the dispatch budget process. And we're still sorting things out today. So I...
To clarify, the analog system is up, correction, isn't it? I mean, the antennas and stuff for that, that's been done, right? Where we've got better contact with our officers. Is that, is that the one you're talking about?
Or talking about last year?
Remember last year, we were having trouble because we were getting dead spots. That issue's been resolved, hasn't it?
That issue's been, is being resolved. It's been funded and under construction.
So the other one, the other communications are going to come from dispatch. Okay, thank you. That answer your question, Chad?
Bill? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve, I have two questions, if I may. And I'm trying to word them in such a way that they're budget-related. You know, we've just seen a report of burglars entering occupied homes on West Boulevard, which seems to be a departure from what we're used to in Rapid City. Is there something we need to be considering in order to help you to be more proactive? I mean, that, it's something that, that frightens me. When people start going into occupied homes, it's such a brash and bold move that it would seem that it requires some action on your part, expert action, that I certainly don't understand.
Well, it's a complicated question, but home burglaries have always been in Rapid City. And they usually come in short crime waves, usually the same people performing this type of burglary for a period of time until they're caught or until they quit. But nothing, nothing that I could ask from you that would help us put ourselves in a position to stop that. This is really something where we need the neighbors' help more than anything. Typical, typical procedure for a house burglar would be to come and knock on your door. And if you're not home, open, try the door or go around the back and kick a window in. It's hard to believe people don't see this type of thing happening. So, nothing I can ask you for.
Okay. Thank you. And then, as a follow-up, if I may, one of the statistics that Joel briefed on last night from the Attorney's Office was a fifty-percent decrease, basically, under, under city ordinance violation tickets slash citations issued, down from fifteen-sixty-three to seven-ninety-eight. And his comment last night was it was kind of tied in with the Police Department. What I'd like to ask you, and I need to skirt around this gingerly too, you know, we have seen great detail that you've provided in terms of how busy your officers stay. And we understand about prioritizing calls. But when we talk about quality of life, you know, one of the things that we seem to see all over Rapid City is people dumping trash out of cars, people not picking up behind dogs. Those things where it would seem, when you, you look for the, you know, who's the person to enforce it, right away, I think the finger gets pointed at the Police Department. But then when we go into priorities and you folks are busy doing more important things, it raises the question, how do we as a city address those problematic issues? And I guess somewhere in there is a question, what, what can we do as a city and as a council to support that proactively so that we've got a means by which to address those petty little problem areas that just make quality of life better for everybody?
A great question. And I don't know that I have an answer that will satisfy anyone. We, we take enforcement action every chance we get. The chance, the times we don't have chances to take enforcement action is when it seems people are most watching for it, such as the Fourth of July and some of those other times. But the, traditionally, the officers you see driving down the street will be driving to a call. And if they're on their cellphone, they'll be answering a call on the telephone to try to keep from having to drive there. So it is busy. But the, the default, the default complaint of a police administrator is to say, "We need more, 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 more." And, but inside, you know, I feel like we've been doing more with less, more with less, for as long as I can remember. It's not a new concept. And I think it's possible that we do get our priorities out of whack. We're preparing to add two community resource officers now, which is a new position, which will take some of the mundane calls away from the uniformed police officers. So that's an experiment to see how effective that can be in terms of freeing up some of that time. But in the, in the long term, I think a part of that, a part of that solution is continuing to add employees over the years. And I know that you'll be able to find a city on the internet with seventy thousand people that has fewer police officers than we do. And you could also find in that, in the FBI Crime Bulletin, you could find that their crime rate is very different than ours as well. So I, I feel very, I have to be very careful making excuses and telling you that it's because of this or that and, and because it's all truly guesswork. But to the original question, included something about Joel telling you that the citations are down for city ordinances. They're also down for state statutes. Our citations are possibly as low now as they've ever been since I've been employed here. And the fact of the matter is, we have the technology to be able to write that ticket more fast, faster and more efficiently than ever before in history. We can write a ticket in about ninety seconds now. And so it's just a matter of being able to spend that amount of time on it. And I don't think it can be addressed with one or two more officers. It's, it's, it's a, it's a major problem and it requires a lot of deliberation to try to come to the conclusion.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve, thank you. You've got a good budget, I see, this year. Out of the hundred and fifty FTEs that you have, what is your staffing level right now? How many of those positions do you have full?
I think we're, we only possibly have one opening, but we do have a number of people in training. And that's where the, so that's kind of a, I think that's, that's really your question, is how many of these folks are out able to do their work right now? I would say we have about fourteen people in training at this moment, which means fourteen less officers that are able to be out there by themselves doing the work that they're supposed to do. So that's a symptom of having a turnover rate that we're having difficulty keeping up with. And it, and it's, it's not that, that a lot more people are quitting as much as the people that are retiring and, and resigning. It's, it's fairly steady. But for the last three or so hiring cycles, we've not been able to fill all those openings. So the day after our hiring, we're already a few down in the hole.
I knew it was a lot because I've seen a lot of new faces lately. Follow-up on that, Mr.? Now I lost my train of thought, Steve. That's terrible. Oh, do you think that the new budget will help as far as retaining personnel? Do you think that we did enough on that budget to help some of the retention?
I do. Many of the, many of the common watercooler complaints about the job as a police officer have to do with the wages, benefits. And we've, we've seen, whether or not it's where it needs to be ultimately, I can't answer that, but it's certainly in the next year going to be far ahead of where we are today. We're going to appear to be competitive with other agencies around us. And so we're not going to have as many hurt feelings, knowing that we're really doing an exceptional, exceptional amount of work where we're getting paid less than someone next door who's doing less. So that part of it is on the mend. As whether or not it's the best scenario possible, I don't know yet.
Well, you've been doing a tremendous job, Maude, for. So I just want to thank you.
Chad, I think you have a question?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Ellender has one question for you. And I don't want to put you on the spot here too much, but you have a hundred and forty thousand rough calls for two thousand and twelve. Can you give me any idea how many of those are for like animal complaints or nuisance calls for dogs and things of that nature?
I could give you a rough idea that it would be around a thousand.
Okay. So does, and just once again, kind of putting you on the spot, but staffing of the Humane Society, does that help alleviate the calls to the, the police? Society, does that help alleviate the calls to the, the police department if we...
It, it does, but it's not, it's not sufficient, in my own eyes, to be able to handle all of the animal complaints that we have during the time period in which we have them.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Bonnie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Allender, do you, I know you said Wavy's coming, I think, Monday night. Do you know if they have gotten, because we are increasing our funding to them, but it seems like we heard that perhaps some of their state funding is going down. Do you know anything about that situation, or should I wait till Monday?
I don't know enough to talk about it.
Okay. Thank you. So do you have more policemen working right now than you did this time last year? Or is it the same, or is it down?
Well, on paper, we have more. As far as how many are out in the field doing their job, I would say it's around the same.
Last year, you showed us where we stood with, on a national average, of policemen. Do you have those statistics for us this year?
I didn't present a pretty graph for them, but I know that last year I showed you that our staffing level was about 1.6 policemen for every 1,000 residents, and that the national average was 1.8. These recent additions have brought us up to about 1.72. So we're inching our way towards 1.8. And when we get to 1.8, then we'll have to determine if that's, if we're an average agency with an average workload, et cetera. But, you know, we see, on the average, that's 1.8, but there are some agencies that are staffed up to 2, 2.0, 1,000.
You had talked about your workers' compensation going up. Is that your share of, for the police department? And how does that correlate with your policemen being out of shape, or, you know, health problems? Because when we're not in good shape, we're going to have more health problems. And do you have any, like, you've had more problems this year than last, or...
No. Present, present police chiefs accepted, our department's in excellent shape. And we have a fitness program, and I believe since the implementation of that program, that, that our health-related worker comp issues are, are down.
Okay.
We track all types of them, and specifically, in two categories, being injured during an arrest situation and other. So we track both of them and try to find, you know, try to find those bad knees that are due to overweight people or whatever, and they're, they're almost nonexistent.
Okay. Good, good. I'm glad you're keeping track of that. Well, I don't want to put you on the spot, so I won't say anymore. Thank you.
Chief has a moment, wants to discuss detox a little bit? Go ahead, sir.
If you're ready, I'll just tell you about the Detox Center. It is, it is a county-run operation. It's at 725 North La Crosse Street and has been for decades. And it is something that has a number of different funding sources, federal and state grants, fee-based funding sources and so on. And then the leftover bill for operating costs is split between the city and county 50-50. And that's the way the arrangement's been for, for many, many years. Last year, our approved budget, I believe, was $442,000. This year, I believe it's going up 2% or to 451? Yes, Tracy says yes. So $451,000, so. And that is a, that is a very much-needed service, of course. We're using it right now, today. There are clients taken off the streets and placed in that facility all hours of the day, 24 hours a day. And it is not, there, there used to be a belief among the council, I don't think it's that way anymore, but it, there used to be a belief that it was a county responsibility, and I can tell you that it's not. They can do it if they choose, but don't have to if they choose not to. So we are getting a good deal by splitting this funding 50-50 with the county.
And if, the revenue from our portion of the state liquor tax is approximately equal to what we pay and is not what we use, basically? Is that true? We receive about 400-some thousand dollars from liquor tax from the state, don't we? So that, if I remember right, that's about equal to what our detox is, so. Totally support it, but I think that's about what we get under that program from the state. And the county, I don't think gets any of that money, by the way. I just brought that in as a little trivia. I thought you might want to know that there is liquor tax collected by the state, and it pays this, basically, but that's all we get, and that's all it pays for. Do you need any more officers? I asked the question. Are we okay? You want to stay put where you're at for this, this year? Let us know if you need more later? While she's doing her homework?
We're doing okay, and, you know, my, my response is that we need a, we should have a long-term funding plan. And at the PD, we, we keep a 10-year plan, knowing that we can't predict what's going to happen next year, but we renew it every year. And the, the funding scheme has to be within that plan. And with the funding, with the additional employees that we've received, I think things are going well. If we receive a cops hiring grant this fall, we'll be putting more on in 2014. And I'll just tell you, from an administrator's standpoint, that's going to be all we can possibly handle with, with hiring for our openings plus additional employees. You could authorize 50 more cops right now, and I'd probably be able to hire four of them next year. So we're doing as best we can.
In 2012, we received about 380,000 on the liquor tax.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Bonnie, did you...
Okay, it's hiding. Chief, what about other support staff? Because I know sometimes when I was working is that we really didn't need professionals, we needed more support staff. Where are you to help our professionals? Where do you think you're at on that?
We're, we're sitting good for support staff at the moment. One of the reasons I can say that is because of our records management transition that is in progress, expected to be done in October. At that time, there's going to be less workload placed on one particular group, our records group, and they're going to be able to branch out and provide support in other areas. But staying on the track we're on, we would be needing to make additional support staff positions if nothing were to change. So I think we're buying time with the new records management system.
Okay, thank you. And please feel free to come back to council if your situation changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a bit of trivia here maybe for you. I went back to the 2004 general fund. 2004, the general fund was $40 million, and the police budget was about $10 million, which is about 25.4%. At that time, there were 128 FTEs. That was in 2004. We come forward 10 years, and we have a $53.5 million proposed budget, and I believe the police budget represents about 24%. So the percentage of the aggregate general fund is stated about the same, but the, and the FTEs have gone up about 22. So to, I guess, to, to gain 22 FTEs and still remain, that's something, you know, what I was trying to figure out is, is, is we're gaining those FTEs, but, but it's not eating a bit larger piece of the general fund pie. So that's what I was hunting for the other day, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that's the end of our time, so I know the chief has an open-door policy. You can call on him anytime, I assume, but don't call at 3:00 in the morning. And would you like to welcome the fire chief, Steve? Hey, Steve, you want to welcome? I think the police chief should have welcomed the fire chief appropriately since... We want good etiquette here. Guns and hoses isn't over, is it?
We lost. That's right. Second's the first loser, though, so...
Fire Department, Chief Multer.
Thank you. There we are. I have to apologize, I broke the rules. I did use a different slide background, so if you notice a marked difference there, it is the color scheme that I chose, so I apologize. Probably get charged extra for that, so, interdepartmental charges. Thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight and speak a little bit about the Rapid City Fire Department. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the department, some of the services we provide, and then, of course, we'll get into the budget request and a little bit of historical perspective of where we've been the last couple of years in terms of the budget, and then also talk about the future and where the, the fire department is headed. My tradition in presenting anything about the Rapid City Fire Department is always to begin with our mission statement and our values. Due to the nature of our business and, and our workforce, this slide is very important to us. You'll see it posted in every fire station, and every firefighter is required to basically buy off on this philosophy. Very simple mission statement of the fire department, and that's three words: prepare, prevent, and protect. I can relate every service, every program, everything we do in the community back to one of those three respective words, so. And obviously, again, due to the nature of our business, our core values are very important to us, and as you can see, the six of them there, there's, there'll be no surprises if you were to review those. Okay, department overview, we have 136 full-time employees. As you know, different than the PD, we have multiple facilities throughout the city. We're strategically located in basically every neighborhood of Rapid City, including the airport, seven fire stations throughout. Our ISO rating, our insurance services organization, is a rating of three in a scale of 1 to 10, one being the best communities in the United States that provide fire, fire protection. Our rating is a three. We've maintained a rating of three for a number of years. Back in around 2004, 2005, we ran the risk of going up to a rating of a weak four, perhaps a strong five, which would have been rather detrimental to us and what we charge our, our community in terms of property taxes and, or, excuse me, what they would pay in insurance premiums. So we were able to make some changes back in around '06, '07 with some purchases of some of equipment and also some training requirements, and were able to maintain a rating of three. We're due in the next couple of years for another assessment by the ISO, and we're doing everything in our power to maintain a rating of three. They are, my understanding is they're training, excuse me, changing the criteria in that assessment process, and I think we'll be in a more favorable position than we were, say, eight years ago, so. The department's represented by three basic divisions: fire operations, ambulance operations, and then fire and life safety, or our, basically, our fire prevention division, if you will. I'll point out, and I'll get into it more in detail, but the ambulance operations is the enterprise fund or the enterprise function within the fire department. So that does represent a large percentage of our FTEs as well as our overall budget, if you were to just look at the fire department. And we'll break those out in the future here. We are an all-risk organization. Some traditional, larger municipal fire departments only dabble in just firefighting or just fire and rescue. Due to the, the rural nature of where we sit in western South Dakota, we're all-risk in that. We're a very diverse organization. A lot of people don't realize that we do so many other functions other than just firefighting. Obviously EMS is a big part, but we do technical rescue or specialized rescue, hazardous materials. Our hazmat team and our rescue team, we, we receive a tremendous amount of state funding. Those are regional response teams, so we basically cover western South Dakota for technical rescue as well as hazardous materials response. Our wildland, we're all trained for forest fires and brush fires. We traveled last year, we had 47 out-of-state responses to provided service to other communities in other states. We logged about 16,000 staff hours, or employees performed about 16,000 hours out of Rapid City on forest fires. We generated a tremendous amount of revenue. With that revenue, we were able to purchase two new vehicles, thus reducing our dependency on the general fund to purchase those vehicles. So we continue to, if we make money on those fires, we reinvest it into equipment and, and again, try to reduce our burden on the general fund. We also provide aircraft rescue and firefighting at the airport, as Cameron spoke of earlier. We have a member of the department that's detailed to the county emergency management position, so we're heavily involved in the county and city's emergency management program. And then also, any efforts we can do to reduce risk in our community and our region, we're heavily involved in. We do have a strategic plan. We're about three years into that now. We do a comprehensive review of that, I should say, a soft review every week, or, excuse me, every year. We're in the middle of a pretty comprehensive overview of that thing right now, looking at roughly the next six to seven years and where we're headed with the department. In that plan, we, there's some, some common things you'll see throughout our, our strategic plan. That was, we, we look at everything through a proactive approach versus reactive. We think that's the right thing to do. We're very involved in the community, and as you can see, we, we do just about anything that's asked of us in the community, and we just feel that that's our, our position. We are trying to shift to more long-range planning. I know there's been questions about, does every department have, say, a three- to five-year plan? We like to think even a little bit further than that. We are undergoing a lot of planning in terms of our protective equipment, our vehicles, our facilities. You're going to see a lot of different things coming out here in the near future with our facilities. We've got a, we're going to have about a 20-year plan that's going to address our needs for buildings in the future. Also, in our strategic plan, we've looked to find efficiencies. Chief Allender spoke of doing more with less. I could stand here in a traditional mindset and say, ooh, more calls, I need more stations, more firefighters, more resources. To go back to that proactive approach, if I can prevent emergencies from occurring or reduce the risk in the community, that means our call volume is going to go down. Therefore, I don't need as many firefighters, I don't need as many fire trucks or many fire stations. So in a perfect world, I would come before you, and our risk reduction efforts would be working, and our budget would go down. Unfortunately, there are outside influences that I can affect, but, so again, we look for efficiencies. One was prone subject calls, or we call them man-down calls, where maybe an intoxicated subject lying in the park, tourist drives by, sees that person, calls 911, thinking they've had a heart attack or something, only to find out that it's somebody who really belongs in detox or to get up and move along. So we did a, a review of that in 2010, reduced our calls for service for about 400 a year, which again, cuts down on fuel expense, staffing, wear and tear on vehicles and all of that. Response to fully protected buildings. Right now, we sit in a building that has every possible feature to prevent or to notify you that there's a, an emergency in here, like a fire. There's a sprinkler system detection in here that detects smoke. Anytime we used to go to a building like this, we would send three fire engines, a ladder truck, a battalion chief, all running over here, lights and sirens, only to find out that Pauline burned popcorn in the finance office. So what we did is, we said, if we've got all these aggressive codes and we're, we're providing the community with safe buildings when they're built, why don't we reward ourselves with that? So what we did is, we took an inventory of all the fully protected buildings in Rapid City and reduced our response down to just one fire engine, leaving those other two or three in quarters and more available for other emergencies as they come up. So we've realized a tremendous amount of savings in, again, staff time, wear and tear, fuel, and the like. All-risk concept, this year, we're looking at, every fire station has a fire, a fire truck and an ambulance. We have a tiered response. People will ask, why do you send a fire truck to every medical call? We're going to change that up a bit in that, as they've got an engine, an ambulance sitting in their station, if a call comes in the area, it's a medical call, we're going to tell them, just take your ambulance. If it's a fire call, take your fire truck. And so that, again, is going to free up some of our EMS resources. Right now, we get so busy where our ambulances are crisscross in the city, our response times get, get longer, and I truly believe this is going to provide a better service to our community and certainly more efficient in how we run the department. A realignment of responsibilities among staff, that's ongoing for us. We're always looking for efficiencies in the office and, and ways to better our service. Terms of capital program, our ambulances, we are due for the purchase of four new ambulances. Those will be funded out of the enterprise fund. Our ambulances are crisscrossed in the city, our response times get, get longer, and I Our ambulance enterprise fund is one-hundred percent self-sufficient. We do generate enough revenue through user fees that it offsets all the expenditures or the costs to do that, and we can talk about that a little bit. It's just over a three million dollar portion of our budget, but those ambulances will be purchased out of that enterprise fund. Buildings and grounds, traditionally we use CIP funds. New construction has been a combination for some of the smaller facilities, we've gone to CIP for those requests, and then you'll see in the future some larger facilities, we're going to be going to the Vision Fund and, and do some presentations for that. Our large apparatus, large fire apparatus, we do have two right now that are currently being funded out of the CIP line, or line item within CIP budget or the five-year plan. We do have one other vehicle under our regular operating budget. Truck one is being purchased out of our normal operating budget. Those three vehicles are all on a five-to-seven-year lease purchase program, and I know that's been a discussion that's already been had in the last day and a half or so. But due to what's already been explained to you, we also have gravitated towards this five-to-seven-year lease purchase program, which has tied our hands a little bit. We can't even think about purchasing something or planning to purchase until we kind of clear the table or get those things paid for. So, we are starting to be a little concerned, we don't want to fall behind in our, our large vehicle purchases. Interest for that vehicle, for truck one, you'll see is in this budget that's proposed. It's about fifteen thousand minor equipment and then a small vehicle replacement. We have a number of SUVs, smaller vehicles that we use for our command staff and all that, so we have a line item within our budget to continue to update things like our Suburbans and Tahos and all that kind of stuff. Okay, two thousand and thirteen, to look a little bit of historical perspective of what, what we did last year. Budget last year was just shy, just short of eight-point-four million. The reason I put that, that far-right column there, percentage of the budget, I want to point out that last year wages and benefits took up eighty-nine percent of our overall budget in the Fire Department. So, you can see we're heavily weighted in wages and benefits. It is our, obviously consumes most of our, our money. Capital outlay, you'll see, was about two percent. Program support is things like search and rescue. We'll talk about fireworks and some other community things that we support is less than one percent. Fixed costs, and I put this in, these are the things that finance provides for us and they, they set the rules for us as we put our budget together, things like insurance, utilities, fuel, those are established for us, about three percent. And then, what I want to talk about is this operational expenses, or this four-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand at the bottom, is only five percent of our budget. That is really, in my mind, or my philosophy, that's really the only part of my budget that I can really affect. It's the only part of it that I can really manipulate or move things around or create priorities or new programs or, or shift, shift focus within the department. So, at the end of the day, I only have five percent of my budget that I can really, and I talk about addressing risk reduction and trying to make us more efficient and all that. Or, it's very difficult to run the department on four-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars, I can tell you from, when you look at. Repairs and maintenance, that's all of our vehicles, takes up about a hundred thousand. Supplies and materials is about another hundred thousand. Travel and training is roughly fifty thousand, and you start to see some real big-ticket items, and at the end of the day, we don't have a lot of money left, so, but we do, we do with what we have. Okay, two thousand and fourteen, request, what's before you today, is just over nine million dollars. An increase of six-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand. You'll see the largest percentage of that is made up in the wages and benefits or the union contracts that you've already ratified. This increase in the, on the fire side represents about seven-point-four percent. Capital outlay stayed flat. Program support, you'll see a thirty-thousand-dollar increase. That was the fireworks display, we took the money from the mayor's budget and moved it over to the Fire Department because we pretty much managed that, that event anyway, so it, this is just a little accounting or makes it cleaner for us. Fixed costs, again, those, those everyday things that finance sets rules for. And then again, operational expenses, I told you, is about five percent, an increase of fifty-four thousand dollars. And a biggest percentage of that fifty-four thousand is, we changed the way we do our physicals. The Fire Department is driven by national standards, whether it be NFPA, I can go through a ton of acronyms, but everything is based around firefighter safety, health and wellness, taking care of our employees, putting them in the, in the safest equipment we can according to national standards. This year, we struck a contract with Black Hills Occupational Medicine. One of the things we weren't doing is we weren't giving our firefighters a physical that met the National Fire Protection Association's minimum standards. And so, Chief Allender talked about health and wellness, talked about police officers being physically fit. We're in the same boat, we have minimum standards we have to meet every year. The problem was if we had an injured firefighter or somebody who maybe didn't lead a healthy lifestyle, we had no way to really root their problems out, get them the professional help they needed, get them back on track. And we have pretty simple expectations, and we think they're simple. Other people, an average person may think it's, it's somewhat exhaustive, but we ask people to come to work and be mentally and physically ready to do the job at seven o'clock in the morning. Part of that is health and wellness, so we did invest a little bit this year in that contract to make sure that our firefighters are getting the best physical that they can to meet the national standards, and we think that's a preventative measure. Okay, the ambulance budget, this is, again, is, is one-hundred percent an enterprise fund. You'll see their budget in two thousand and thirteen was just over three million. This year, we're asking for a hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-dollar increase. We do project that the revenues this year will certainly take care of that increase, and we will continue to have yet another successful year of operating a, a smooth enterprise fund. Increase here is about six-point-two percent. We do have billing staff. Our collections rate compared to some national averages is above average. We're collecting between eighty and eighty-five percent of the money that we can collect. That is a very high number nationally. We do a very good job. We've got kind of some, some bird dogs in that office that if you owe us money for an ambulance bill, they will hunt you down, so. We, yep, and keep after you, so. And we have to do that, and it's not just about us getting money to buy nice, you know, shiny things in the Fire Department. We do that because we need it. Promise I'm not touching anything. See some, some ink going on on the bottom of the screen there, but, we do that because we have to reinvest. We have to purchase new ambulances, we have to purchase new equipment. We want to continue to maintain the absolute best service we can, and we're very, very confident in the level of skill and expertise of our paramedics and all of our firefighters that we, we feel that if you're riding the back of one of our ambulances, you're going to get excellent care. So, it is a reinvestment in that service when we increase those fees. Just a little perspective of, you know, what's happening in the Fire Department. This is a, a ten-year graph, shows increase in call volume, basically requests for service. You'll see that it, we're just marching upward, and, and that ten-year average, you can see, it's just, it just marches out there. Every year we continue to get busier and busier, and, and we continue to look for ways to reduce our calls for service. I talked about prone subjects, and I talked about response to fully protected buildings and all that, but at the end of the day, there's just so much we can do when people call nine-one-one, we have no choice, so. So, requests for service, what, what's going on? Why does that call volume continue to increase? I've looked at some, some national trade magazines and tried to study what's going on. I've also been paying attention to what's going on in Rapid City in terms of needs assessments for elderly and all the other stuff. As everybody knows, we do have an aging community. Baby boomers are, 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 are starting to slip, trip, and fall, and, no. Richie, you're laughing, I'm sorry, I haven't, we haven't taken you to the hospital yet, but.
Some of us started early.
Bonnie, I don't know, I think I heard a story today about a slip, trip, or fall, but, anyway, aging community, baby boomers. We, obviously, everybody knows Rapid City is growing, and, and we, I think, I'm, safe to say, I'm, I'm pleased with that. I'd like to see the community grow and, and become more economically stable and, and all the things. We, we've done well throughout the, the economic downturn, but talk a little about lack of affordable healthcare. When, when people become financially strapped, some of the things that go are being able to maintain insurance. They may lose their job or be laid off. When that happens, they, they lose the ability to fund their own healthcare, so what they start doing is start using basically public services like our ambulance service, emergency department, things like that. They, they become more and more dependent on, on government services, therefore our call volume goes up. I threw a bullet up there, environmental factors. Last year, as we all know, we were in not even an extreme drought, but an exceptional drought, which they had to create a new category for drought last year. That drove our response to wildfires or forest fires and brush fires up significantly last year. So, that could also be affected by things like a year of severe weather like we're having this year, thunderstorms and the like, winter storms and all that. So we're very dependent on what happens with the environment. Okay, expanding services and programs. We've, we continue to look for ways to expand our service and provide better service to the community, and it's all about increasing the quality of life for our citizens and people that visit us. Community paramedic program, this is similar to what the Police Department's doing with their community policing. We're going to have a paramedic on staff five days a week that will go out and visit with elderly that, and what happens is when an elderly person, maybe they need to go have their medic, medication checked, or they need to have their blood sugar checked, or they need to revisit with a doctor about something. What's happening is sometimes if it happens in the middle of the night, or, or they don't have access to get to their normal physician or their, their family practitioner, what they'll do is they'll call nine-one-one, have an ambulance take them to the emergency department, only to find out that their blood sugar's a little out of whack. They go back home and then they have to follow up with their regular physician. So, we're looking at putting a paramedic in an SUV, and they'll go out and make those calls and take away from our fully-staffed advanced life support vehicles and send that paramedic out. And just to do some of that preventative work, take care of the, I mean, really kind of the minor, I hate to use the term Band-Aids, but, you know, handing out Band-Aids and checking blood sugars and checking blood pressure and things like that. Try to really defray some of the burden on the emergency department. Rapid City Regional Hospital is, is really taking the lead on this. They're requesting some, some funding through a Bush grant, and they'll likely fund this program for us. So, when we get ready to roll this out around the first of the year, you won't see any requests coming for this program. This is going to be funded through the hospital, so we're pretty excited about that. Quality management program, you guys have approved, a full-time employee, we're going to put on a quality manager in our EMS division or in the ambulance part. What happened is, is we're ten years into providing advanced life support or ambulance work. We've since paid off our startup loan, so now that we're not making that payment, we took that money and put it towards basically wages, and so now we're going to have a quality manager. That person's going to check everything from the quality of our charting, quality of care that's delivered, oversee our EMS training, and really just kind of bolster the whole program. In the last ten years, we've had one person running our entire ambulance division, and that's our assistant chief over the EMS, and he has no additional staffing to help run thirty employees and that whole operation, so. Comprehensive evaluation of our high-risk occupancies, this is really an inventory of the high-risk buildings in Rapid City. And once we get that, that inventory of all those high-risk buildings, then we'll look at how are we going to address them. Substandard housing, it could be apartment buildings that aren't, that don't have any fire suppression systems in them, or maybe there's a clientele living in a certain area that we can work with the Police Department to maybe root out crime or, or try to freshen their neighborhood up or whatever, so that'll be taken place as a priority. I talked earlier about the all-risk response model in our stations, how we deploy our resources. Fleet maintenance, the mayor has graciously allowed us to build into this budget a, another mechanic. We have one full-time mechanic, we have a fleet of sixty-three vehicles. Between the engines and ambulances and ladder trucks, we beat the heck out of them. I talked about call volume, how busy we're getting. Our ambulances now, the four that we're replacing, are all at a hundred thousand or over, and, and every day, one of them is back there getting transmission worked on, suspension, heating and cooling, you know, air conditions are always going out on and everything else, so. And we're, we're really hoping with this additional mechanic, we can get back on the preventative side versus right now, it's, it's just really management by chaos back there. The, our mechanic comes in in the morning, and there's something broke sitting there, and that's his priority for the day. We'd like to get back onto more of a preventative maintenance program. Partnership with western Dakota, hopefully everybody's kind of heard, we have a very, very robust partnership with western Dakota in terms of their fire science program. We're also going to be talking about an additional facility out there in the next few years, so we continue to work with western Dakota and, and foster that relationship with them. Survivable space, or the, working with Parks and Rec with the urban interface management plan, that's going out in those high-risk areas of forest fires and doing thinning, meeting with property owners, trying to incentivize them to go out and do some thinning and, and make their home more, more survivable should there be a forest fire in the area, which predominantly takes care of western Rapid City is, is where that area that we're talking about. I would stand for questions, just a couple of quick things if I could before I turn it back to you. Again, I talked about standards. When we put our budget together, there are so many things that we have to do, we don't have a choice, and that's our facilities have to meet standards, everything from, when we leave and go on an alarm, there's a system in the building that shuts down everything in the kitchen. And that sounds crazy, but if, if there's somebody using the stove or somebody's got something on the top of the, on a burner or something, we go on a call, we forget to shut, shut the stove up. Fire stations is ironic and stupid as it sounds. We'll come back and they have a kitchen fire and stuff like that, it's just, it's just the way it is, so. Put yourself in the position of these guys if you had to just drop everything and run out the door in the middle of your day-to-day activities, so. Facilities, obviously our, our protective equipment, the clothing we wear is very expensive, the air packs, the radios we carry, the helmets, gloves, coats, pants, very, very expensive. Those are all set out, we have to replace all that ensemble between seven and ten years. So we're building plans in our budget where it, it'll just be a, a line item that'll be in there, it'll be set, and every so many years, all those things will get replaced to meet the standards. And my fear would be that a firefighter would get injured only to have a federal agency come in and do an investigation into the injury or why that person died and find out that the turnout gear they were wearing was out of service, or their air pack was out of a standard or something like that. And it, it just, it's irresponsible to, to put firefighters in equipment that's not meeting standards. Also, our training, by national standard, every firefighter has to complete two-hundred-and-forty hours of training every year. That equates to basically two hours every day that they're on shift. And, and everybody knows even training is expensive. We have to send firefighters all around the country to specialized training for things like rescue and hazmat and all that, so. And I talked earlier about the physicals. One of the things I'm working with finance on is that emergency management is going to come before you the next couple of weeks and talk about their budget. That's a city-county function. I'm going to ask, work with finance, we're just going to take that, instead of it being a standalone function that you guys have to, to decide whether you're going to fund or not. It's by state statute, we have to fund emergency management. So I'm going to ask that emergency manager just be placed under the Fire Department and under our umbrella because for them to come before you and ask for this roughly seventy thousand for emergency management, it almost lends itself that you can play with that money or you can decide to make that a priority, you can cut it, you can add to whatever, and by state statute, we have to have emergency management, so it's not, it's something that we have to do, so. We're, we're really bound by it. And also, one thing for future, we're all looking at becoming accredited. The Police Department has been accredited for nearly twenty years. I can do the same thing for the Fire Department, however, in, in recent years that we've determined that that's a priority for us, we don't right now have the staff or the resources to dedicate to becoming accredited. It's not a, it will, it basically require an FTE, and I've spoken to the mayor about it, and, and he's interested, and it will be something that I will bring forward in the future. You won't see it in the next year or so. But that's what I have for the Fire Department. I thank you for always the continued support. Seems like every time I reach out to one of you, you always have good things to say about the Fire Department and what we're doing, so. I'll stand for questions.
To remind everybody, we are close to the next half hour, so. Quick.
Perfect.
Steve.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, I, I just want to quickly just say I appreciate your leadership at the Fire Department, both the Police Department and, and your department as well. I think you guys do tremendous work proactively with your, with, you know, your efforts to reduce the amount of calls on both ends, police and fire, and the fact that you guys are always looking for smarter ways to do things than, than to throw people at it and money at it, and, and we just need to work harder, the smarter rather than harder. I love that, so, and it reflects in your guys' quality of work. So, my question, on the page eight of the bud, of the presentation that you had. I don't know if you want to bring that back up, but my questions were on two things there. If you could just elaborate a little bit on the miscellaneous and, and then again the debt service below it.
You tell me which ones, Steve, this one or?
That one, yep, that one. Three columns, it's the next one, it's page eight.
You were on it.
That one? Okay.
Miscellaneous, miscellaneous, and then the debt service below, if you could just expand a little bit on those.
Yeah. Miscellaneous is, let me find my, I got my little cheat sheet here, so. And I'll introduce our EMS chief, Jason Culberson.
Well, and that's what he must have added, was that the miscellaneous must be our.
Gear and ambulance medical stuff.
Yep, supplies and materials, because I looked at that and saw miscellaneous for two-hundred thousand. It's a little high, so, yeah, that's got to be our ambulance.
Yeah, that's got to be our ambulance disposals.
Yep, ambulance disposals on that is a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and that's when you get in the back of an ambulance, everything is disposable. Used to be, we brought it back and cleaned it and laundered it and all that. That's everything from a nasal cannula to an IV catheter, to disposable sheets, blankets, gloves, everything, bandages.
Okay.
Yep.
Call volume goes up, cost goes up. The cost for the materials are going up also.
Debt service.
That's the cost of ambulances.
Okay.
The new ambulances, we do... Were those on a four or five year?
That's the financing side of it.
Yep, lease purchase of four ambulances for four years. And that's why you'll see a reduction in that. Those four have since been satisfied, and that's why now that that line item's going to go down, you're going to see that come back, we're going to purchase four new ambulances.
And the debt service did go down because we did pay off the loan to the city this year, I believe.
Okay.
The startup one.
I'll let somebody else ask questions.
One more quick one, and then we're moving on. Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief Mike, early on in your presentation, I think you said seven stations, one ambulance per station, so seven ambulances needless to say. And because of their age, basically one in the shop almost all the time, which means six in service out of seven, what problems does that create for you? Is seven enough? Because it... Didn't that number rise recently from four to seven?
Well, no, we actually have nine ambulances.
Okay.
Okay, so we do have a couple that are sitting in reserve all the time. I will tell you that we typically purchase new ambulances every three years. Due to the budget, we tried to push them another year. Let's... We went from Fords to Chevys and tried to beef them up a little bit, thinking we'd get another year out of them. They're nickel and diming us to death. So, every morning, what happens is you see this massive shovel of vehicles. Sometimes it happens in the middle of the night where one of them will break down, we've got to hurry and try to limp it downtown, swap out with one of the reserve ambulances, get it back out to the station, get it back in service. So, it's a day-to-day struggle for us, and we get a brief every morning from the battalion chief on what's broke, and you see a lot of it. So, we'll have four online here within the next year, and that will help. We'll get back on warranty and all that kind of stuff, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Got further questions, I'd suggest that you stop by the fire department, you're more than welcome.
So, if I'm being cut short, Cam and Steve will be then?
Yes, you are. You're getting cut short.
Okay, perfect.
I want to have a reputation of staying on schedule, but great job, chief, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
You know I support you. Next one is Jeff with the Parks Recreation. Now, can we go one more without a break? Okay. We'll take a break at approximately seven o'clock unless Jeff gets done early. Okay with you, John? All right. If anybody wants to go get a cup of coffee, we're talking about the ten-minute or...
I'd like a cup of coffee, I'll get you one.
Would you? Please, thank you.
You want anything in it?
No, thank you. Sir, go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, thank you very much.
Introduce yourself and your staff and whatever you want to do.
Jeff Bigler, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. With me tonight is Lon Van Dusen, our Parks Division Manager, and Doug Low, our Recreation Division Manager. And without those two gentlemen's leadership, we wouldn't have the fine Parks and Recreation Department we have today. So, we are here this evening to give you a little overview on our budget request for 2014. An overview of our department shows that we've got seven divisions, the administration, the parks, the recreation, the ICE, aquatics, golf, and cemetery divisions. We currently have forty-six and a half FTEs. We annually employ three-hundred-and-fifty temporary and seasonal employees. We have, among other things, twenty-nine parks, seventeen-hundred acres of park and open space, forty-plus miles of paved and unpaved trails. We have two golf courses, two disc golf courses. We also have two cemeteries, an indoor ice arena, indoor aquatic center, three outdoor pools, sixteen picnic shelters, twenty-five public restrooms, and a number of off-leash dog areas, as well as we offer hundreds of programs for adults, youth, senior, in recreation, sports, leisure, enrichment, and special events. Last year's original budget, 2013, was seven million, one-hundred-seventy-one thousand, seven-twenty-two. This year, we have a budget which is slightly less than that. The mayor's recommended budget, seven million, sixty-eight thousand, five-hundred-sixty-one dollars, is a reduction which is largely due to the fact that we're no longer operating the pub and grill at the Meadowbrook Golf Course. We contracted it out this year, and the budget for that last year was about three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, and so there is a savings there by contracting that out this year. This is just a four-year summary of the overall department budget, and you can see that there is a reduction in from the 2013 to 14. Now, going cost center by cost center, just to give you an idea of our increases, our administration increase was only two-point-one percent over 2013, nothing very remarkable in that request. Our parks budget is just an increase of five-point-seven percent. Our urban forestry, which is one of our subcategories of our parks division, has a two-point-six percent increase. Our recreation cost center is asking for a twenty-five-point-three percent increase, and the reason for that is we have put in capital amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for three replacement vehicles for the recreation department. Those are vehicles that are on our vehicle replacement schedule that we have, and so those are going to replace some vehicles that probably shouldn't be driven a whole lot longer. Our ICE division is showing a modest one-point-three percent increase, and our aquatics division has varying small increases depending on the location, Swim Center, one-point-seven, Sioux Park Pool, two-point-four, Parkview, two-point-five, and Horace Mann, one-point-eight percent increase over the current year. Now, we included Horace Mann Pool on here, and you might be asking, why are we asking for funding for 2014 when that pool's going to be demolished? That budget will actually be for the new fifty-meter pool, which is going in at Roosevelt next summer. So, the operational cost of the new pool will be roughly, we believe, the cost which is being requested in the budget for the previous Horace Mann Pool. What you will see in the 2005 budget request will be a new budget request for the new pool, that Horace Mann Pool. So, there will be one additional pool in the 2015 request, just to put you on notice about that. Our cemetery has a less than one percent increase over 2013, and you can see the various increases and decreases in our golf operations. The Meadowbrook Maintenance is up eight-point-five percent, operations, two-point-six. The Meadowbrook Restaurant, as I mentioned, since we're no longer managing that, is showing a one-hundred percent decrease, which is excellent news and is attributing to our overall department decrease in request. Our executive golf course maintenance side is showing or requesting a decrease from 2013. That is due to kind of some consolidation of services and kind of streamlining some processes over there. The operations side of that course is requesting a three percent increase, and the La Croix Links is showing zero change from 2013. The city does provide a thirty thousand dollar a year subsidy to that course, primarily for the water usage there, and that is as per the lease agreement with YMCA. Now, some of the areas where we're expanding service in the coming year, as I mentioned, the fifty-meter pool construction at Roosevelt's going to open up that pool in that location to additional uses, additional swimming competitions, additional use for a deeper-water pool, additional classes and programs that require deeper water can be programmed at that site. What that's also going to do then is open up in the subsequent year, the brand-new Horace Mann Leisure Pool, which will again expand service to swimming to that community in the North Rapid area. We're also going to be constructing additional hiking and biking trails. The Sweet Creek Trail will be constructed this next summer, as well as the Skyline Wilderness Area Trails. So, that will open up Skyline Drive to quite a few more people that'll be able to take advantage of the beautiful views and the fresh air up on Skyline Drive. And this, 2014, is also scheduled to see a ten percent increase in the number of golf rounds at our courses over the 2012 levels. And with the installation of the Promenade and the Legacy Gardens at Memorial Park, we anticipate next year and in subsequent years seeing increased use of that facility for perhaps larger events. Been hearing suggestions perhaps about some of the summer nights programs migrating to that area, so we'll be able to... We're going to be seeing a lot more use in that site, and it's going to be quite a location. Now, I want to give you a heads up about some things that will be coming up on the horizon, not this year for this budget, but in the next year's budget. As I mentioned before, the new Horace Mann Leisure Pool that will be coming online in the spring of 2015 will require an entire new budget. That will be a kind of a big chunk, but it will be probably similar to what the budgets are for Parkview Pool, something similar to that. We'll also be experiencing increased maintenance of the new trails which will be coming online, Skyline Wilderness Area, all as well as the ten... Approximately ten acres of new trails that are going up there. We will also have three new parking lots and four additional trailheads, walk-in trailheads to maintain. And additional landscaping responsibilities with the Memorial Park improvements, the Promenade, the Legacy Commons, additional landscaping, new landscaping with the Mount Rushmore Road Project, the Kansas City Street Project, the West Chicago Project, the new intersection or interchange at I-190 and Silver Street. Those are all projects that are going to require either additional staff or some contracted services to maintain. Every time that one of these new projects comes up that has a beautification or a streetscaping component, someone has to maintain those areas, and that someone is going to be the Parks and Recreation Department. So, I just wanted to give you all a heads up that next year, when I'm standing here before you, I will be talking about... I would be asking for additional resources to maintain those new areas. And with that, I will open it up for questions. I want to leave you plenty of time for questions, so fire away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, with the opening of the Skyline Wilderness and whatnot, do you have any formal or informal agreements? Bike shops generally host their own types of groups, and mountain bike riders, as a general rule, are very generous in terms of offering their time and their services, and bike paths... I'm sorry, bike trails, needless to say, always need some sort of maintenance. And I'm just wondering, are there any agreements or are you working towards that to take some of the burden off the city?
We have not formalized any agreements, but we have spoken with the Black Hills Mountain Bike Association, the Runners Clubs, and the Volks March people, who are all interested in assisting in the maintenance of those trails. And we will certainly be using them either for, you know, one-day cleanups here and there or otherwhere, or just relying on them for ongoing litter control, reporting things to us so that we don't have to have staff monitoring the trails as often. So, yeah, we are going to be relying on them heavily for assistance in that.
Good, thank you.
Brad. Thank you. When is the Skyline project going up for bid?
There... The RFPs for the... For Phase One, I'll call it, for the parking lot design are out right now, for the design of the parking lots and the trailheads, yes. Then we will probably be putting out the bids for... It'll be a design build for the trails this next spring.
Bonnie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jeff, where's your staffing level compared to, say, five years ago? Do you know?
Well, our full-time staffing level is the same as it was probably ten... Five years ago. Our seasonal staffing level is down from that point. Our seasonal staffing funding in 2010 for our parks division was roughly two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. This 2014 budget has that dollar figure at two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, so we're still not to the funding level for seasonal employees for our parks division that we had in 2010.
Okay, so in 2010, your seasonal was at two-seventy, and now you're at two-forty-three?
Correct.
And you've taken on more property and all responsibilities since then, too, right?
Yes.
So, what's your biggest need as far as an employee? Is it in the seasonal?
Well, we rely heavily on our seasonal staff. I mean, we certainly couldn't do it. And most of our... You know, obviously, our growing season is when we have our seasonal staff, and they are just invaluable. And so, yes, additional seasonal staff is always very welcome. I think what we're going to also need, when these larger landscaping projects come on this next year or two, is we're going to have to probably look at additional full-time staff that can lead a crew of seasonals, somebody that has a little bit more experience with horticulture and that sort of thing. So, you know, seasonal staff is great, but you can't rely on them entirely for...
Right, that's why I was wondering if you felt like you needed more seasonal help or more... A full-time person?
Yes.
Your greatest of both. We'd had some recent complaints at the Vicki Powers Park, and when that was investigated, did you feel... I mean, I don't even... I didn't really hear back about, you know, what problems were actually found, but would you say that is because of lack of staffing that those problems occurred?
I would say probably, you know, naturally, if you had more staff, you'd have... You could pull weeds faster, you could cut grass faster, you could do all those things faster. So, it could be a symptom of a reduced number of staffing. It could have just been, you know, an isolated incident as well. You know, I'm not going to attribute it all to just a lack of staff. I think every park has a little bit of vandalism from time to time, and those things just come up, and they're dealt with as soon as we can certainly get to them.
Okay. I just have concerns because as long as I've been on council, I have heard that, you know, we keep giving parks more and more to do and with less and less people, and so I have a concern about that, so thank you.
Steve.
Thank you, Mr. President. And my question kind of dovetails with what Bonnie was just speaking about, and it's really just a matter of you filling in the blank, I guess, as far as when it comes to these new areas that we're going to be taking over, including what we do today, be it the parks, you know, from class one, class two, and I'm looking at that, how often we maintenance those or mow those areas as well. Is there a comparison always done before we hire staff in comparison to, say, contracting with some local mowing company? Is there... Is that done?
You know what? Let me ask Lon Van Dusen to respond to that. He's got an extensive history with our department, and I'm sure that he's had that question asked to him more than once.
Thank you, Lon, I appreciate it.
Thank you for the question. You know, we've explored to some limited degree, you know, contracting for some of the services in the parks. The mowing, we have not, although some of the areas, we do have some jurisdiction over are contractually mowed, I guess, especially those areas that are leased by Little League and, you know, the sports associations. But as far as the parks themselves, you know, we have not explored that portion of it.
Is there any reason why that would be? I mean, has it been looked at before and it just was so far and away less expensive to hire staff to do it, or... That's my concern.
Yeah, no, I think the area we'd probably be more interested in contractual work is actually the landscape maintenance rather than the mowing. work is, is actually the landscape maintenance rather than the mowing. The mowing is, you know, a fairly straightforward operation, but, but to go through these streetscape and landscape projects, you know, on your hands and knees pulling weeds and whatever is...
And, and I only say that because I'm comparing what equipment costs, upkeep costs, wages, obviously wages and salaries are our largest expenses. So I'm hoping that, that's something we can really focus more on from a city standpoint, especially when we have businesses, local businesses, who might be able to contractually do that better for us than to increase staff for the city, so.
And I think that's an area that we can certainly look at. It's certainly easy for, for us to get quotes on something that's, that's really contained in, in borders like landscape medians and streetscapes and those sorts of things.
Sure, okay, thank you.
If I may, oh, I'm sorry. Three questions I have, and one is, do we have adequate money programming for parking lot maintenance and tennis court maintenance? Because I know that was an issue over the last few years and not, you know, really having crisis problems, that's one. The other one is, where are we on the Pine Beetle wildland mitigation funding? Do we have that in this year's budget? Is it a continuing program? And the other one is the cemetery. You know, years ago, we had some issues raised that were basically resolved, but we were told it's going to be a, a new software management program and some issues. And I'm curious, is, is that in place or where is that at? And I guess I'll give you all three of them, so you can answer them now or later?
Okay, no, I'll be happy to answer them now. In terms of tennis court repairs, we do have some funding currently for some tennis court repairs. We don't have enough to completely redo, say, the Sioux Park Courts, which is going to be a major investment, but we do have funds to do crack repair and, and some other repairs on, on, on some of the other neighborhood courts, I'll call them, like the Wilson Park Courts and those, those sorts of courts.
As we're going through that, is that an area we need to maybe increase your funding?
That's what's...
One of the needs that, okay, so noted.
Yeah, I, I think both tennis courts and parking lots, parking lots in particular, are in need of some, some, some help, yes.
Okay, thank you. And the Pine Beetle thing?
The Pine Beetle funding, yes. We do still have the Urban Forestry Cross Center and we do, we've, we've actually increased the funding request a little bit in that, that budget. It's, it's very successful and we do have, we had the Urban Interface Plan revisions come to, to the Public Works Committee. That will increase the incentive for additional landowners to participate. We are continuing to remove trees and, and remove hazardous wildfire fuels. So yes, we are continuing with that and it's, I would say it's been a very successful program.
And the cemetery?
Finally, the cemetery issue. We do have funding in this current year to bring a consultant in to take a look at our operation. That will not only take a look at, at how we're doing, what we're doing, but also take a look at what particular software will be the most beneficial to us. We have funding available for that and we are going to be going out for an RFP for that consultant here very shortly. So we, we anticipate that over the course of the winter, we will be, we'll have some valuable information on, on how we go forward with our cemetery operation.
Question I've asked a couple of years ago and every year is, is the fact we have $61,000 in the endowment fund and we have a long-term permanent liability out there. What are we going to do to ensure that we have the maintenance for that area? Has that been looked at or will that be looked at?
That will be looked at in, in this study. We'll look at our long-term obligations, not only for the existing cemeteries, but also what we're going to do when those cemeteries are built out, what's our next step.
Okay. I think someone else had a question. Did Brad?
Thank you, Mr. President. Question I have, are the, the golf courses are your portion of the enterprise, or enterprise fund, right?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I don't have anything against golf courses, but my question is, on the revenue side, do they generate enough, is there a surplus at the end of the year or is there a shortfall and, and then how does that figure into the other budget? Trying to figure out, is it a shortfall?
Exactly. Go ahead and come on up.
I was just curious on the enterprise fund, if there's a, if there's a shortfall then, where does that come into the, the other part of the budget? Yeah, we, we, on an average, we've been running about $50,000, $60,000 short on the executive golf course. Meadowbrook over the last few years have been either breaking even or right about at that area. Now, last year we were down about $40,000 and that was due to the restaurant. So right now through six months, we're looking pretty good at both, both golf courses despite March and April being pretty much taken away from weather for us. So we're real excited, plus the construction, we thought it's going to be a hard year this year and it's looking like we're going to be all right, so. I would, I would, I would say that we're, we're going to be right there at the end, either making a little bit of money at Meadowbrook or at least breaking even again. And executives actually got the most play it's ever had in its existence this year right now, so.
Is there a subsidy from the general fund that picks up the difference? I think that's the question.
We have development fees that, another fund that's in the golf courses where passholders pay an extra dollar. We try and use it for, if we ever get to the point where we can use them monies to help with course improvements, but a lot of times that's the first place that they decide to take money from, from finance to pay the differences. A lot of times they've had to go into Meadowbrook's surpluses to pay off executives' decreases too, so.
Go ahead.
The, the one thing that I will do want you to know is in the past, the YMCA's $30,000 comes out of the Executive Development Fund too. So right away, right off the bat, we're $30,000 in the hole over at Executive. Although to the, to the bright side this year also of this, the YMCA had that grant where they put a lot of money in their new irrigation system and stuff over at La Croix. And through this month, and of course, had a little wetter year than normal, with, they've only used about $6,000 worth of water this year. So I think they're prudent getting a new water system and monitoring system for their watering and it's really paid off, so.
Thank you, Doug.
But, well, I mean, I, I think that's pretty good. I mean, when you look at the money we invest in youth programs and stuff and you look at golf courses and probably the cross-section of people in that age group, I mean, to, to come that close to breaking even, that's probably a good thing, isn't it? I mean, for what, for that, for that recreation that the city offers people? I mean, I'm pleasantly surprised that it comes that close. So tell the golfers I'm not after.
Yeah, I don't think you want the golfers to have to address me.
Press it.
Huh?
They got clubs, Amanda. That's what they call an arm in a golf course, a club.
Thank you, President. Jeff, just a follow-up question to what Bonnie and Steve were talking about. When you do hire your seasonal employees, do you have a rough idea of how many are returning seasonal employees?
Oh, do you have an idea? I mean, we do get an awful lot of returning employees. I don't know what the percentage would be, but I'd say a...
Probably half and half.
Half and half?
Half and half.
Because that's training that you don't obviously have to invest in, so they're employees that can just pick right up where they left off.
That's exactly right. And a lot of our, the mowing crew that, that is done, the mowing that's done by the seasonal staff, those are seasoned individuals who, who know the areas that they're mowing and we don't have to really supervise them a great deal. They go out and, and just do their job and that is a big relief to us.
So just out of curiosity, when was the last time a wage study was done for your seasonal employees and do you have trouble getting hirees to come on? If, if half of them are returning, you're still trying to fill 175 positions. Do you have trouble filling those positions every year?
So far, we haven't. You know, we, we've done real well, but I think I suggested to Mr. Barbir that maybe sometime the city ought to look at our seasonal wages, you know, citywide, just to see how we're setting with the, with the private sector, definitely.
And all of those 350 are not just in the, the maintenance side. We also have seasonal employees and temporary employees working our recreational programs, some of our, you know, our lifeguards, all of those other areas as well.
Okay, thank you.
Oh.
Seven o'clock.
Doug wanted to follow up.
I, I just did want to say, on the recreation side, it is starting to get a lot tougher. When we're paying lifeguards $8.50 an hour, $8.25 and they can get a job at McDonald's for nine bucks an hour, it starts, it starts getting tough. There's another water, big water park maybe coming in town. You have the, the big water park that's out there already where you don't even have to be certified and they're actually making just as much money as our people that have to have a lot of certifications to be able to lifeguard. So on our behalf, it is getting to be tougher. Probably not maybe so much on the maintenance side, but the qualified license type recreation help that we have to have, it is getting tougher.
And Doug, as a follow-up to that, first of all, there's no maybe about it, it is coming, the water park. But the other side is, do you offer training for your lifeguards? Do you certify your lifeguards as part of their hiring process?
Yes, we do.
Or do you have, or do you require them to already be certified?
We actually have the certifications. Our staff is certified to be able to teach the certification, so that's what we do. We offer classes and then they take them from us and then we actually have, be able to pick the cream of the crop of the people that are going through the classes for our area, so.
Okay, thank you.
This being seven o'clock, we'll adjourn for 10 minutes. We'll reconvene at 7:10. I need to meet with Jeff.
Thank you, Chairman.
If you have any questions before you press the page.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait for Roy to queue it up here. Thank you. The Community Resources Department, as some of you know, is a mix of six different divisions, some of them closely related to each other, some not as much. The Human Resources Division is managed by Brandy Christensen. Brandy's fairly new with the city, but is doing an outstanding job. There are 752 FTEs, just slightly above that currently in the city, with another 1,200 temp and seasonal employees that we bring in, average on a year. So you can imagine the workload in HR with only five employees if you count me in that HR division. Geographic Information Systems, Coordinator Don Jarvanen, that is a city-county combined program. We do receive some funding from the county to help fund our GIS division. Information Technology is headed by IT Officer Jim Gilbert. And to remind you, we have a centralized IT structure in the city, so if you see an IT staff member at PD or in the library, for example, they work in the IT division. That allows us to trade people out, in and out, to cross-train people and to exchange and communicate information. That is, has really been a good model for us. Community Development, managed by Barb Garcia, that's got our community development block grant funds as well as an offender reentry program that is completely grant-funded. Code Enforcement, also managed by Barb Garcia. The code enforcement that's in Community Resources deals with the nuisance ordinances, the, you need to mow your grass, clean debris, shovel your sidewalk in the winter, site triangle issues and, and those types of things. And we do work closely, obviously occasionally with PD, with the building, you know, with the building code inspectors and, and the city attorney's office on, on various items. And then we've got risk management with Risk Manager Keith LeSprintz. He deals with the city's liability, liability insurance, work comp and employee injuries, as well as he is also our employee training officer for the city. Overview of our budget. In 2014, we're increasing our budget at FTEs by one to 28.5. That is an additional IT analyst that we are adding. It's actually been added in '13, but '14 will be the first year it's in the entire budget. The, that is to help with our workload, our project workload in IT, as well as the fact that people are aware that IFIS replacement project is coming and IT will obviously play a critical role in that. Our total budget is $2,749,000, 5.2% increase. The general fund is $1,577,000 of that, a 9% increase in the general fund, which actually equates to about $130,000. And then our other funds, $1,172,000, that's only half a percent increase in those other funds. I broke it down here by cost center to give a little bit more detail and you'll see under the IT item that $96,000, that 14.2%, you know, dollar-wise, that's the biggest increase. Again, that is an additional FTE that was added as an IT analyst, as well as the other pay and benefit increases in that division, as well as one of the other items is, we now have a disaster recovery server room out at the Rapid City Regional Airport and we pay about $18,000 a year for the fiber to get to the airport. So that was not, this is the first year that has been included in the budget. So that has a lot to do with the IT increases that you'll see there. The 2013 original budget, you'll see there at over $2.6 million. For 2014, we're at the $2,749,989, which is actually $136,000 and change in increase. And the wages and benefits in the department actually increased by over $143,000. So we actually, we budgeted a slight decrease in the community development block grant money because at the time we did not have a firm number. We also had a couple other items. For example, this is the first year, each of the last two years, in 2012 and 2013, we replaced a code enforcement vehicle. We didn't have to do that this year, so we did actually have, you know, some items other than wages and benefits that actually went down slightly. Coming in 2014, we've got some neat projects. This is from our GIS division. They're testing HTML5 software at this point that will allow them to push these interactive maps out on mobile devices. What you're looking at there is a survey, survey point site map and that is running on an Android phone. And so that is, that is a picture of that. GIS gets a lot of requests to be able to do that on mobile devices, as you can imagine, from realtors, appraisers and engineering firms. So that's kind of a neat, Don Jarvanen likes to call them GWIS items, it's coming in 2014. That's, that's kind of a neat one. Other things in 2014, in the Community Resources Department, we have what we'll call the IFIS replacement, but we're going to have a major software upgrade to financial and administrative software, as well as the HR and payroll software will be replaced as part of that project. So in our division, we've got the HR side of that new implementation and conversion, as well as obviously IT's large role in that project. Also with First Administrators closing their doors, Wellmark will become our new third-party administrator, administrator for our self-funded healthcare plan. Also the, we'll continue to monitor the expenses and effects of the Affordable Care Act on our healthcare plan. That is a bit of a fluid situation, as most of you've probably heard at this time, but we'll continue to monitor that. As part of First Administrators going away, we'll also have a new employee dental plan. As part of First Administrators going away, we'll also have a new employee dental plan in 2014, actually later in 2013, so there'll, there'll be some changes there. In Code Enforcement, we plan to continue to have emphasis on substandard housing. We've increased the demolition fund this year by thirty thousand dollars, because we do anticipate, again, that's not a general fund item, but we do anticipate possibly demolition of a couple of properties in 2014. And then the last item, Windows XP, which we still have many PCs and laptops and, and devices in the city that are running Windows operating systems that are on Windows XP. XP will no longer be supported as of April of 2014. So we've begun those conversions, they will continue. We are no longer installing XP on any new conversions or, or new purchases of, of that type of equipment, and we're having to convert to Windows Seven. So as you can imagine, as many of those devices as are in the city, that's, that, in the city, that's quite a project. So that's another thing in, in 2014 that we'll continue to focus on. And that's all I have. If anybody has any questions for me?
Questions, anybody? Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, if I may, you're six divisions, five managers. I'm just, I'm curious about the pay discrepancy between one manager overseeing, doing two jobs versus the other ones doing one job. Is that something that you've looked at resolving, or? I mean, I just, I know you and I have talked before about parity. It's not something I always agree with, but in this case, is that something that you've looked at remedying in the future?
Well, it is, but remember, we, we, we've looked at different options there. In theory, they, Barb has one full-time job if you put those things together. Those of us that know Barb, know that that's a little different, you know, Barb works a, Barb works a tremendous amount, but remember, the other managers in the division do as well. So I, I don't know how, those jobs were graded by Conry the same time with, that we did that, you know, the last time. One of the things that we are looking at is if the, if some of these initiatives in terms of affordable housing, some of the things that we're looking at maybe doing is leveraging the CDB, CDBG money, and some different things that we can do there to focus on affordable housing, then we may have to take some things off of Barb's plate. Logically, that would probably be the Code Enforcement Division, but at this point, there's just in the discussion phase.
Okay, but you are looking, it's on your radar?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, play ball.
Thank you.
Let's go to post twenty-two. Is that it, where you're going? Post twenty-two? Good luck. Stay tournament, yes, I'm sorry, Bonnie, did you have a question, Jeff?
I think I was wanting to ask, really talk to Barb Garcia, if she can come out.
Barb? I'm sorry, I didn't see you wave, wave profusely.
Hi, Barb, thanks for coming tonight. You had told us a while back that, you know, funding and all may change, because we didn't know exactly how the state funding has any, have you heard anything about, any updates on how funding for our social projects are going?
Not yet.
Okay.
One of the houses, and I can never remember which one is doing it, one of them is putting forward a budget that would put us at about where we are now, or a little higher. The other one is cutting it by half. So, depending on what they resolve, and they had some discussions today, some yesterday, there will be some more. They still haven't gone to the full Congress for a vote, but it'll be somewhere in the middle of that.
Okay, well, I thought it was probably the case, but I thought I'd take advantage of you being here to see, because that's a very concerning, how other proj, our social projects that get money here in the city, whether they're from state source, or through the city sources, or federal, that I think eventually we're going to have a world of hurt come in with it, so, thank you.
Bill?
Barb, if you don't mind standing, and Jeff, if, if you don't mind coming back up just so you're near the microphone, I, I just want to make sure I heard you right. You said something about code enforcement vehicle, and I thought you said "the" code enforcement vehicle. Do we only, do we only have one?
No, we have three.
Okay, so there is one for each code enforcement officer?
And we replaced one in 2012, one in twen, 2013, we don't need to replace one in fourteen, so that's one of the reasons that budget is not increased.
And let me ask for either or both of you, do, do you feel that we've got enough coverage with the code enforcement officers we have? I, I walk every night with my wife for two and a half miles, and I, I think I could keep them busy, and I, I try not to be a pest, you know, and, and be more helpful than problematic. And, and I think if we had more eyes and ears in terms of involved citizenry, it would make their job easier, because I, I know they can't be everywhere all at one time.
You know, my answer to that, Alderman Clayton, would be that it really depends on the will of the council and the mayor. If you would like to enforce, you know, every ordinance to the letter of the law, you know, we could keep two people busy just looking for, looking for sidewalk, you know, broken sidewalks in the city. I mean, we could have ten code enforcement officers and keep them busy if the council had the will to deal with, you know, the mob of citizens that would be upset with us for, for enforcing to that level. There have been times in the past where there have been administrations that have, where code enforcement has just been complaint-based, they haven't done proactive work. Under this administration, we handle the complaints first, and then we handle the proactive activity, go out and look for violations. You know, again, it's something where we could add staff, but then we would have to ramp up enforcement.
Fair enough. Let me just give you a preview, and I'd like to talk to you privately. It was one of the questions that I, I posed to Chief Allender. You know, those things, like people not picking up after their dogs. And, and I don't mean in their yards, but you, you see people who know the ordinance because they've got a bag tied to the leash, and then they're looking around to make sure nobody's looking, and marching away, and not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And you know, if, as a citizen, even as an alderman, if you approach them, it's just the beginning of an argument. And I, I'd, I'd like to work with you in, in an effort that we could bring about some better coverage in those kind of areas. That and littering, I, I don't know what it is, where, you know, people can go buy a drink, but they can't take the empty cup home, it's got to go out the window. And I, it's those things that just destroy the, the quality of living in our city, so not the place for the discussion here, but if you could be thinking about it, and I will make time to, to come talk to you, and maybe between your office and, and the Police Department, and I think, again, because of priorities, it kind of, it, it's got to fall somewhere, and, and I think we need to figure out a way to address it, and I, I'd like to be part of the solution, so, thank you.
Can you go to the ballgame now? Go, Jeff.
Got to run home and change quick. Thank you.
His number is three-nine-four-four-one-three-six, if you need him tomorrow. You got a cell phone, will you talk at the game? That's not, that's not fair. Okay, next item is Compass with Kellen Kelly. Kellen, you're on.
Everyone, I have to apologize. If we received a request for a presentation, I completely missed it. That's okay. We're, we're so small, I think I can do this without one. So we are the, Sarah and I, who's in the back of the room, are the Compass Independent Audit Staff. Our main purpose is to conduct independent performance audits of city agencies, activities, and programs. We're charged in our ordinance with looking at ten different things, which unless you have questions, I won't bore you with, but they all are pretty much grouped into things like compliance with laws, regulations, and statutes, looking at ways to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the way the city operates, make sure that we're protecting all the assets that the city receives, whether it be financial or otherwise, as well as looking for ways to potentially save some money if we can. So those are our primary objectives. We have a staff of two that is remaining unchanged in our 2014 budget request. Our actual overall budget request went down a big two hundred dollars, from one hundred to ninety-eight thousand this year, to a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred. They, we took only the allowable increases in wages, salaries, and benefits, utilities, and insurance. Those were offset by reductions in professional services, supplies and materials, and repairs and maintenance. So we were able to offset, based on the one-year history we have, those expenses that we had sort of over-budgeted in 2013. Other than that, there's no overall change to the budget, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions? No, I, I guess, I guess you can get to go to the ballgame, too. This is a, this is a council budget, a council function, and we can certainly discuss it as a council, but if you have any particular questions of Kellen, we'll let him, yes, John?
We have, depending on how you define completed, we, we usually define it as when the draft report goes out to the agency, and then there's maybe a couple-week period after that, so. Two, one of which you've received a report, and the other one will be coming shortly. We expect, we've received our second round of responses from the agencies, but the audit work is done, and it should be ready for Compass Committee Review on Monday, so we've actually completed two. No, we have, I can't remember how, I think we had five or six on the audit plan, so that would leave us with, well, no, I, I believe we had four or five for each, each year. I realize now that was sort of a grand overreach, but we, we, I can tell you where we are. We have completed the two audits from the 2012 audit plan that were just designed basically to get us going. And then out of this year's audit plan, we have our first audit from that plan, the city fees audit is underway, as well as the, the airport parking and rental car concession audit is underway. I've initiated the follow-up audit for the city, and these aren't, the follow-up audits are not included in the audit plan, because we don't know when an audit will finish and when we can initiate follow-up. It's usually about a six-month gap from the time we finish an audit until we start, so we have that underway as well. We will be also opening next week the three audits that we have on our schedule for this year. They're small audits, one is Parks and Recreation, they're outdoor aquatic facilities, that's an extension of cash handling. Also, we have, I believe it's water reclamation. So we have, we have two audits that are on the schedule, but they're really a follow-up from the cash handling audit. And that would just leave the other three audits that are left on the schedule would be an audit of the information technology function, and audit of the Civic Center's trust fund, that's the fund they use to pay the entertainers and the promoters, and then a financial processes audit. So we're about halfway there, and we're about halfway through the year.
Could you give me some idea of the timeframe of how many months it took you to do it?
Sure, yeah. We don't, we don't track hours per se, but, you know, we have a timeline to when we started. So that audit started right around the eighth of October, and we completed it the end of And so it went to Compass Committee and Council in February.
So roughly four months, and that was just a, like you said, a tune-up? Is that roughly?
Well, it turned out to involve more work than we had anticipated. What we didn't know going into it was how many cash handling sites were in the city, what type of policies and procedures were there, and there wound up being more places for us to visit.
The reason I'm asking is I took that audit to, to a independent audit firm here in Rapid, just to see roughly how much it would cost to have the public sector do it, and they gave me a quote of fifteen thousand dollars. So for four months of work, I think that in a two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget, you can see on the private sector, there's possibility where we could save a lot of money by doing that. Thank you.
I would assume there are other things going on besides that, but go ahead. Other questions about the budget, that's what this is about? If not, thank you. Next item is Mayor and Council, Your Honor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All looks so excited, Steve. That's, that's better. The Mayor and City Council budget really hasn't changed much from this year to, to next. This budget includes the mayor and the ten members of the City Council, includes two full-time administrative support staff to the mayor and City Council, and it includes a one-part-time temporary position. When I took office, I had no staff at all, and so we operated the entire office on, on temporary labor for about six months until we were able to, to get staffed up, and so we are now back down to one part-time, unbenefited position, which is similar to what we had several years ago. The reason the budget has gone up for 2013 and 2014 is because council contingency is included in, in the, in the bar graph. As you can see, it didn't go up a whole lot. We'll get into the specifics here. Went up by about eight, eight thousand dollars, and this amount includes council contingency of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's assuming that the, the money that's currently allocated for the Compass program that's in the council contingency fund is reallocated. This hundred, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar council contingency fund, based on past expenditures, is probably a bit high, but we left it in here because, the reason it's called contingency is because we don't know what will come up, and you can see a history of council contingency on page one fifty-three in your, in your budget book. Increases, you can see wages, benefits, insurance was the main thing, professional services, there was a, a small increase, and I'll talk a little bit more about that on the following page, and then office and miscellaneous supplies, a small increase of two thousand dollars, and it takes it back to either the two thousand and twelve level or the two thousand and eleven level, I can't remember which it is right, right now. There were some decreases, committee cost reduction of a thousand dollars, the Mayor's Committee for People with Disabilities, the support for that has been moved to Community Resources. The Community Resources Department has been providing excellent support for this, for this committee, and it's especially important because the, the title of this committee is Mayor's Committee for Employment of People with Disabilities, and with the, the promotion of the new disability consideration policy, and our efforts to promote and advocate for citizens with disabilities, and also working on our ADA transition plan, this thousand dollars is reflected in Jeff Barbeer's budget. We also, it's important to know that the fireworks, and Chief Mike referenced it earlier, the twenty thousand dollars is still in the city budget, but it's been moved from my budget to Fire Department. We are in the process of developing a customer relations management system to smooth out the process between the mayor's office and city departments. I have recently signed a contract with Ron Senney, a, a local management and business consultant who has worked with other city departments in the past for not to exceed five thousand dollars, and he and the Employee Assistance Program $5,000, and he and the employee assistance program management are gonna, are working with us already on helping us streamline our, our processes, and the day-to-day activities of, of the mayor's office, it's, it's, you know, sometimes very chaotic, and we have, we're having, we're having trouble keeping up with all the requests that come in, all the concerns that come in. We have a spreadsheet farm that we use to track many of the, of the issues, and, and it's, it's time that we have a, a better process. We also have implemented a data retention process that complies with local and state policies. To state that we did not have a data retention process would be the understatement of the evening. We had no data retention at all, really, in the mayor's office prior to my taking office, and so, we have put in, in place a policy to ensure that the data that's in the mayor's office belongs to the people and belongs to, to the process and not to any particular occupant of the mayor's office. Oh, one other item, actually several, one is I wanted to note that the Human Relations Commission, which the mayor's office and city attorney's office support are in the process of exploring a, what I believe is a wonderful idea of working, of becoming what's called a FIPA or a Federal Employment Agency to hear EEOC cases. Right now, an EEOC, Equal Opportunity Employment Commission case typically goes out of, out of the city, it typically goes to Denver, and so we are looking at taking that process in-house. There is federal funding, a little limited, to be able to do that, and so, I wanted to put that on your radar screen because I believe that will help take the, the goal of addressing discrimination and prejudice issues to the next level, so I'm excited about that exploration. Want to mention a couple of things where the, the costs have, have gone up. One thing is, over the last year or so, one thing is the cost of, of record retention, there is a, a cost, a minor cost in terms of server space, but there is some, and, and paper, which there is some, but we're trying to move more into PDFs and, and net, network space, but it costs a significant amount in terms of, of staff time to ensure that we're keeping proper records in the, in the mayor's office. We now have, the mayor's vehicle expenses are in the mayor's budget, except for the car itself, which is a police department vehicle, and the mayor's office vehicle expenses, though, are in the mayor's office budget. I was using a 2007 Chevy Impala until very recently, and it had a bad experience out in the parking lot due to some late-night visitors that decided to have some fun with it, and now I have a 2010 Chevy Malibu with about 50,000 miles on it, and just for the record, I also still take my old 1996 Old Z-88 with 152,000 miles on it to and from work, and every once in a while, I need the, need a ride to the mechanic to pick up my car, so. And the costs of travel overall are, are down. So, with that, I will stand for questions.
Questions of the council. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor, could you go into more detail on this EEOC? I'm not quite following it, and why would we want to, I guess, I need more, could you give more detail on that, please?
Absolutely. The, we have a, we have a human relations commission, Brad, that we've had for, for many years, and over the years, whether intentionally or unintentionally, I think it's more been the process of inertia and city government, it's kind of become marginalized and, and really hasn't done as much as what we believe there is the potential for them to do. The city of Sioux Falls and other cities have been using, using their human relations commissions to hear actual EEOC cases, and an EEOC case is a, would be a case, would be, for example, against a, a non-government entity who has allegedly discriminated against someone for reasons of, of age, race, or disability. And so, instead of having that case heard in, in Denver, that case can now be heard, would now be heard in Rapid City in front of the Human Relations Commission, and that requires significant exploration. We've worked on several draft ordinances, and hopefully, we'll have something to present later, later this fall, but I believe it's something that's very important for our community to at least consider.
Are there people that actually hold this commission spot now?
Yes, we, we have a, we have a, a commission now, a human relations commission, and there, there are mayoral appointments, confirmations by the city council, and, and there's a very old ordinance that we're, we're looking at refurbishing to allow them to handle these cases, and we would also have to do an MOU with the Equal Opportunity Employment Commission. We recently had a, a conference call with Jim, Jim Marsh with the State Human Rights Commission, he gave us some pointers on, on the process, and I, and we're, we're moving slowly but surely. And it's a high priority for me. Any other questions? That was easy.
I have one that's philosophical, and it's not necessarily directed at, at this particular budget, your office. I do wish the city would have a public relations officer or public information officer, some way of getting the word out to the public on a more uniform and consistent professional basis. We've never been able to get that done. Police has done it, fire kind of does it, and I think it's, would help us tremendously, and it kind of ties into the customer relations item. Currently, if you go into the phone book, sometimes you can't find the number for the department because it isn't listed, or it's changed. A lot of people may call a department, think they're going to get answered there, and they got to go somewhere else. I just wish we, as a city, could adopt a centralized information center where, if you want to find out what day the library's open, where garbage is, they could call one number and they get an answer. I think that'd be a tremendous improvement, and if we looked across our departments, the number of employees that we have doing that anyway, in same way as the number of employees we have processing purchase orders, I think there's tremendous efficiencies that could be gained there and improve public relations. If we had called City Rapid City, 394, whatever it is, 3300 are the numbers, and we had like a rollover to five or six numbers, I think we would see a huge increase in pop, you know, acceptance by the people, and I think we could probably do it without losing any money or reallocation of assets, because we spent a lot of money doing it anyway, and I think we get a lot of frustrated people because they don't know who to call, they get the wrong number, bouncing around, and I'd just like that to be considered.
Thank you, Jerry, for the suggestion. I'll split your question into two parts. One is the, the need for a public relations person, and the second would be information and, and call flow. Regarding, regarding public, public relations, you know what, I'm open to that, I don't think, if we did it, I don't, I do not think that that position should be in the office of the mayor. I, I, just philosophically, I think that that position would need to probably be in community resources. I don't think you want that position in the office of, of the mayor. I think to have it in community resources would be, would, would be much, would be much better, and, and I'm open to it, and the reason, one of the reasons I didn't bring it forward this year is, is I felt that my responsibility was to bring, to include as many of the, of the department priorities as possible, and there's very few items in here that I added to the budget on top of what the department heads asked for, other than additional focus on, on infrastructure and spending for parks and recreation and a few other things, but I am open to that, and it has a, it has a tendency in other cities to be a very political position, which is why, if we would do it here, I think it, it must be in a department other than the mayor council office.
What's everybody's thought on that? I'm curious.
Well, can we finish the questions of the budget and consider it later?
Of his? Yes, I mean, this is a question of why don't we include this in the budget?
Well, that's what I mean, that would be us.
Yeah, of course you can, of course you can.
Can we, I wrote it down, we can discuss it later.
Yes.
May I take the second question?
Okay, Richie?
Well, can I answer your second, your second question? Your other question was call flow.
Yes.
Jeff Barbeer and I talked about this just the other day, about the, the, the call flow, and I don't know if, if you noticed this or not, but the mayor's office, as of about, I think, six months, I don't remember, maybe it was six months, maybe a year ago, we changed the call flow in the mayor's office, because we were published in one of the phone books, I don't remember which one, but 394-4110, all the way down, and we had, we had one day where we just counted on an ad hoc basis, and we guessed that we had 250 calls, it sounds like a lot, and it is, for just a few people to handle, and we're still getting a lot of calls, but now what we have is, we have, when you call into the mayor's office, it now says, you know, please, please press one for the city's general information line, which rings through to 394-9300, please press two for the mayor's office, and it works extremely well, and we're looking at doing that for some of the other, the other departments as well. We're also, we also have an issue with after-hours customer service, some of the lines dead in, some of the lines ring to voicemail, some that are answered or that are checked right, right away the next day, some of them ring to voicemails that are full, and some of them ring to voicemails that don't get checked as often, and so we're, so we're working on a, on a more uniform solution, and with the voice-over IP and the network we have, there's no reason why we can't be a lot smarter with our phone network than we are and be a lot more efficient and reduce stress for our employees and citizens. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. President. The suggestion I'm looking at, or the area that might be able to help us out with the PR, there is a second floor committee that's going to get back together again, and they're also considering rehiring, I think is the right term, the lay group, and bring them back in. Would that be appropriate for them to take a look at it? I, I don't see this as a large, large issue, and it could be something that that group could look at for that second floor review committee.
Can I address that?
I'm, I, we got questions, and then we'll go into the discussion, but go ahead. Do you have a question?
Like me to try to answer that?
Other comments?
Up to the chair, Hal. Yep.
Do you want another question?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just offering that as a suggestion, is looking at the PR for the, for the city, is suggest to the second floor committee to?
Sometimes I wonder if we need committees or consultants to tell us what common sense tells us to do, and obviously, we have tremendous calls, and we obviously have a lot, tremendous, I mean, our business is customer service.
Yep.
I don't think we need, I think we just need to sit down and, and say what would be a good way to do it.
Yeah, it, it is in motion, and I'd like to have, hear from the mayor, but all, all that is in motion right now, so could we add that into their objective or goal list to examine?
I don't care. I'd just like to see it done.
And I'm willing to hear what the mayor has to say.
Well, two things. First of all, Jim, we'll address the Jim Lee question first, Jim or Lee, Jim Lee, L-E-H-E. Jim was, Jim was hired in, hired several years ago to come in and, and help with a, a review on second floor, particularly planning to some extent, public works, and his area of expertise is urban and transportation, planning, building permitting processes, so I don't, I don't think that's quite the skill set that we would be looking for on this, and I'm glad you brought that up, though, because we're looking at bringing in Jim Lee back this fall to do a validation and review on what we've been doing on, on second floor and, and planning in public works. You know, Brett Limbaugh, our, our planning director, and, and I are both agents of change, and we, we have been making a lot of changes with, with your support and your assistance, and you need to be careful with that. When you make too much change at one time, it creates other sets of issues which, which need to be reviewed and, and resolved. We believe that we're on the right track, but we believe it's important to have Jim Lee come back in and validate and review, because we believe that there's more that needs to be done. One of the common concerns that we hear is, is over-stipulating or overriding of, of reports, and that's something that we're, that we are working through. Regarding consultants specifically for public relations, you know, I think first, I think first, my office, although it functions okay, we need to, we need to organize more in my, in my office. I spent the last two years rebuilding the office, putting in basic processes with the help of very dedicated staff, and the department heads have all stepped up and helped, too, and now we're in the, we're, now we're working on taking the office to the next level. I'll tell you, I floated, the idea has been floated by other department heads on the idea of having a public relations person, and I think there's a general consensus that it's something that really needs to be considered. I just felt there was other priorities that were, that were higher, and the department heads felt that, too. Thank you.
Bonnie?
Thank you. Mayor, you may have already addressed this issue, but I didn't hear you. The insurance went up this year 61%, so what's that about?
No, I, I have no idea.
This year, with going to a new insurance company, they allocated costs differently than the prior one, as well as our overall premium increased anyway, and so, the number in the 2014 budget more closely reflects that, which has been paid in 2013 from the new company.
This is liability and vehicle liability, correct?
It's liability, for you guys, it's probably liability, the vehicles that, or the one vehicle that the mayor has, it's very limited as to what goes into divisions and departments that don't have facilities, because then you also look at property insurance and boiler insurance and arts and just a whole slew of different things, so.
This is not the insurance for employees' medical, that's separate, correct?
That is separate.
Okay, thank you.
And on that note, this does, this includes wage increases for the non-elected officials, right? I don't, I think if there would be an increase for elected officials, that would have to be added in, so it does, it doesn't, it includes the increases for?
For staff.
For staff, right, not, non-elected, so.
Okay. Other questions of the mayor? You're getting awful, awful easy.
I am. No other questions, Jerry?
I, I think I expressed that issue on centralized services. I think it would be a money, a great money saver and frustration saver. Well, that concludes the listening portion of this. Our next meeting is August, help me a little bit, 12th and 14th, correct?
12th and 27th.
And please explain, remind us, we have a new council member, that we need to have this all done by a certain date, because you have to have it to the county by such-and-such a date, and we have to formally vote and approve, so you can get that done, so maybe we ought to just spend a minute on roughly where we have to be by when?
My preference is that we have first reading at the next, of the ordinance for the appropriation at the next legal and finance meeting, as, unless you guys have changes in how the budget was presented by the mayor, it would reflect the mayor's proposed budget, and then that would go to council on August 19th. Second reading, then, in my wish list, I guess, my preference would go to second reading to the September 3rd, I believe, council meeting, and that way, everything is done in place, ready to go, so October 1, when we are required to have that to the county, it's already there. Now, in the past, I know full well that, that last reading has been continued to the second council meeting in September. Obviously, if there's things that need to be dis- Obviously, if there's things that need to be discussed and to be figured out, I would be in support of that. If there's not, I would love to have this done after the first meeting in September.
Okay. Thank you. Very helpful. Brad?
Can numbers change between the first reading and the second reading?
Absolutely.
It'd be nice to not, but we can, yes.
And numbers have changed in the past, um, sometimes by more than others, but...
My concern is so...
It's all on audio and video, so they can refresh their memories prior to the next meeting.
I, I so noted, there's a horrible committee that meets at three AM, Brad, you're on it. The other question that, that we need to, uh, I'm sorry, but the, the, a, a process thing that we need to think, we think about as we go through this, with those guidelines that we want to adhere to, is that there are going to be some things that we need to discuss, like the CPI. We need to discuss the compass budget, because that is our action. And I think if there's other areas we'd like to maybe up the ante a little bit, like I've heard discussion on humane society, I know we have possibly an issue with dispatch. Those kind of things, and, and we need to do those, I think, in this environment versus prior before we go to committee. If you, I think it'd be a good way to do it. I mean, we're sitting here on a friendly basis, right? And we can handle it, and this is the place to do it, and we have another meeting scheduled for the twelfth, which might be the time to do it, but Bonnie.
Some of my thoughts, if we could get them on a list, cause I'm afraid I'm like in the Jerry and Richie group, I'll, I'll...
What was that about?
Offer.
I forgot.
They were saying that you would forget between now and August twelve, but...
You didn't get the joke, I said, I, I, I forgot.
Also, this is a little off topic, but I believe that the HPC committee's expanding into four Friday mornings at seven-thirty. That Brad could be assigned too.
Yeah, so Brad, you get obnoxious, well.
Okay.
And, and you're gonna, and you're gonna have to work with Bill and Jean every day. Probably is, that's okay.
Okay, a couple items that I'm just, want us to discuss further. We haven't heard from the Journey, but I know they're in desperate need for thirty thousand for, uh, their digital system, audiovisual or... See, I've forgotten the details, but I know they need the money. About funding the software package, if we should do the one point five over through a loan, or if we should take a, pay off a chunk of that, uh, cause I'm concerned that we keep pushing out these bills, cause we're not gonna even start a payment till twenty-fifteen. Storm drainage maintenance, uh, what, if we're gonna do something about that, I think they need about a million dollars for that. Monday night, I'm gonna question the wavy budget of a hundred thousand, because I have heard that their state funding is gonna be cut. So I'm concerned about that. Increase, what do I have here? Oh, the twenty-seven thousand dollars that, uh, I would like to restore to Parks and Rec from, uh, the twenty, from their twenty-ten staffing to the, to raise that up, so that their twenty-fourteen is equivalent to their twenty-ten.
This is for seasonal or for...
Yeah, for seasonal. And then also, uh, I noticed in the mayor's budget, mayor and council budget and travel, that there was like twenty-two thousand set aside, but we're not spending that much, so we could maybe still ten thousand from that, from that fund. Cause so far year-to-date, we've only spent like twelve hundred or something, so.
We can start going to better places besides Pier.
What?
We can start going to better places besides Pier.
Yeah, I know, we're kinda boring. But no, but the previous years too, we didn't, you know, we only got to about eleven thousand, so...
May I comment on that, folks? We have not done this the last two years, is that there's a league of cities across the country, there are some workshops that I think all of us, or all of you should take advantage of and possibly go to, because you get a chance to see the big picture of things that are going on in other cities. That's not a bad thing to do, and I think we should be looking at that, and I think that's where that twenty-two thousand is for. I'm not saying we're gonna go stay at the Ritz Hilton in New York downtown, but, you know, there are things to do that are very beneficial, that we would benefit as a community from.
I'm eyeing something in Hawaii in February.
If it's worthwhile, it's not that, what do I take? Will you drive?
Uh, yeah. So anyway, I appreciate y'all listening to me, cause I just wanted to get those ideas, uh, down, so that, um...
I hope I, the thirty thousand is a Journey software package, whether we finance or pay for it, correct?
Two different things.
Yes, two different things. Journey is, uh, I think it's audiovisual, bringing up their digital needs, cause they say they're in dire, dire need for that.
And the other, the other was for...
The other software package, uh, Pauline says she has them down, if, the software package about how we should finance that.
Maybe storm drainage.
Storm drainage maintenance.
Parks and Rec seasonal back to twenty-ten level.
Right, the wavy budget, I'm glad the mayor increased that. I'm very appreciative of that, but we still need to be cognizant of what the state, if the state's cutting funding to them, what we're gonna need to do. And then, yeah, okay, thank you very much.
I'm just gonna go around, Brad, you got anything you wanna add to, like that? Chad? Sure, just, I gotta write one note forever, I gotta write this note now, I gotta write this down so I don't forget it. What do you got, Derek? Brad?
We've figured it out.
Brad, what was the question?
I, I posed a question to Pauline, the, on the, in the general fund, her pie chart, if we take the budget divided by the...
They're wrong.
The general fund.
We figured out what it is.
These percentages are right.
Yeah, we'll fix it, they're all wrong, it's not just the fire.
It's IFAS, blame it, blame it on IFAS. Uh, charity? Anything you want, in specific, Mayor? Anything? Amanda?
I already have mine written down.
I got yours. Bill?
I'm good.
Deer management, was that one of you had some money in, you wanted more money for? No?
Nope, I'm gonna kick their ass this year if you don't follow the instructions.
Hey, a little ghost just wrote, okay, Steve, anything? John?
You needed clarification on that journey exam.
Yes. It wouldn't hurt.
Thirty-five, and it has to do with the, uh, security system.
There is something with software down there too, but...
Yes, there is, that's, that's an additional item.
But the thirty-five, there's thirty-five thousand for security?
Yes, and, and that includes infrastructure for the security system as well.
Okay. You can tear it down, but please don't make any noise, and we're not breaking out of here till we're done, so. Other items? Yes. That I haven't already got, I hope.
These are twenty-fourteen budget questions or further discussion items. The first one is credit debit card use at transit in a timeline, as requested. I will tell you right now that we've already been in contact with our, uh, provider for credit card machines. We will be setting that up, uh, some more tomorrow, so that should not take much time. Jerry requested a document that shows what we have for a fleet. You had indicated twenty-fifteen budget, but then you said something about in a month and an hour, and so I'm not sure where you wanna go with that.
Well, let me, can I clarify that?
Absolutely.
I, I think that would be very helpful for the council to see a similar list of, by department, primarily vehicles and heavy equipment, what it, what they have, year, you know, year of or year of purchase, and purchase price, and if they know replacement year and replacement value or replacement cost, that's all.
So more, more like a replacement schedule for the, that fleet, okay?
And that could be a month or so. It doesn't have to be part of this budget, I think it's good information we should have. Charity? I have a question from councilperson Doyle.
Thank you, and it might be more directed at the mayor, um, something that just came to mind. When we had those couple of, um, zero-growth budgets prior to your administration, I, if, if I recall correctly, we had about eight hundred thousand dollars cut out of, um, replacement, I mean, for, for equipment, equipment replacement. How far are we at having, uh, made up for that over the last couple of years, do you know? Have you, is that something you've assessed? Or could you by a next meeting?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You wanted to break down the Civic Center revenues for twenty-fourteen budget. General fund income statement as of six-thirty of twenty-thirteen, looking at a lease program for office equipment, demolishing properties, and looking at the land trust to give that property to once the buildings are demolished. Detailed interdepartmental charges for twenty-fourteen breakdown, uh, and then the stuff from tonight, second floor review committee to look at the, uh, public information or PR person. CPI, discussion, compass, dispatch, journey capital improvements, thirty-five thousand for security system, software package funding, storm drainage maintenance, estimated one million, wavy budgy, but budget, increase parks, uh, to the twenty-ten staffing equivalent for seasonals, cut ten thousand from mayor and council travel and humane society.
Anything missed? Bill?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'm just sitting here thinking, as you mentioned deer management, and let me just say this out broadly to everybody. It, it's, it's been my feeling since the beginning that we're overpaying the guys who are going out and collecting the deer. But when, when you look at the numbers, two hundred deer, roughly a hundred dollars apiece, twenty thousand dollars. If we cut it in half, it's a savings of ten. And it, you, you almost get to the point where, you know, when we're talking in millions, ten thousand dollars is pocket change. But I think i- if we took a hard look at all those small areas, ten thousand here and ten thousand there suddenly becomes a big chunk of change, and then it becomes meaningful. So I, I guess I would encourage everybody to, to be thinking that way. There's, we all have different pockets of expertise, and there's places within the city that we tend to look at more deeply than others and become more intimately familiar with. And, and I think if collectively, you know, if, if, if each one of the ten of us save ten thousand, it's a hundred thousand. Now it becomes more meaningful, a- and I think that number begins to grow, and there's places to spend more, but I think there's places to save some too. So we might be thinking in those terms where a, a little bit put together collectively becomes something we, we should work on.
Certainly, and I, I would hope our departments have already done that, but certainly, I think that's our job. And also, I think we need to look at places that, you know, uh, we can be penny wise and pound foolish. Maybe we should be doing more, like you said, and we're not. So, we have this list, I have about three or four pages. We meet the agenda for, excuse me, the twelfth, what do you do? Is that when we have the charitable nonprofit, if we need them, or we want them, or that, that's when they show up?
We have an hour set aside for the community investment funds, and basically, it's a dialogue between the council and whichever ones you wanna ask questions to. So if you have questions for them, uh, you could probably take them by group that are here that evening, but it's more of a question-answer period versus a presentation like the department directors.
That is, we have basically the, the arts side, and we also have the, uh, like the humane society and the other, uh, the community investments, there's two, there's the arts and then there's community investments, or are they all one, one of the same?
Well, they're all considered community investments. I will tell you though, the art side of it, we give the money to the allied arts. So I don't know that they will be here, we have not cut their funding, we've actually recommended a, a small increase to them. What I see being here would be the humane society, the wavy, um, perhaps Lifeways. Civic Center? Oh, the Chamber, then the CVB, um, Lifeways, Ellsworth. Economic Development, those types that have like a line item budget versus a budget through this community investment fund.
Chad?
Can I make a request or a plea to let us sit at the dais next time? Just throwing that out there.
I don't care. I think there's a reason we do it this way, we, a little historic, I think, please, share it with us, somebody?
Some of the history of this is prior to a few years back, it was always considered just a work session. And so to differentiate a work session from a special council meeting, it was brought down to the floor versus sitting at the dais. Since then, it's been determined that this is truly a special meeting, whether you call it a budget work session or not, and full minutes are taken versus before, we just kinda kept notes. I guess I really don't have any issue one way or the other. It is easier to have a, a discussion amongst the council people sitting in this format versus trying to look down the dais and, and having a, a conversation. But that's totally your call.
Next, next time, let's flip seats. Can we do that? Let's do a flip seats.
Well, and I will tell you, as somebody presenting from that side, when Amanda was asking me questions, I couldn't get eye contact back with her, and it's frustrating trying to answer somebody's question when you can't make that eye contact, from my point of view, being at the podium, giving a presentation.
Years ago, the presenter used to be at that end, and then you...
It was very informal, it wasn't recorded.
But I thought it was a nice way to do it, so it might be another format.
Yeah, we would let him sit at this end of the table and just talk to you.
It might be a good way to do it, but I, I don't care, but... Other questions? Brad? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, being this my first year, like, the ambulance in the airport, the enterprise funds. I mean, uh, am I, it'd be nice to see the, uh, proposed income side. To me, I mean, I'm, I'm curious, what, what enterprise funds have excess cash? I mean, which ones, you know, it, do they just break even, or?
That's something that Tracy and I actually talked about last night, that perhaps in this year's budget would actually include a sheet that showed the revenue sources coming forward to, to fund their budget. For the most part, and right, wrong, or indifferent, you're under the assumption that they create enough revenue to support whatever budget they present. Sometimes that may not be true.
I can tell you that they do that, and the, the information's there, it just might have been getting that to you or them to you. And in the old days, the old format, all the division managers came in and sat down, and you could ask those questions, but...
And typically, when we ask for budgets, they only give us the expenditure side, and so that will be a process change that, that department directors that have enterprise funds will have to, to, start adhering to. We will send out an email asking for the revenue side.
Maybe we don't, maybe I'm the only one that... Well, the old days, the old days, we used to have to put together a projected revenue.
I will send out the email right now.
We used to have, we used to have show up revenue. Other questions before we, before we have the race to the cars? How, we have the twelfth and the fourteenth, and the twenty-seventh. That might be here. The way I look at it, we have... I, I know a little, a little ghost scratched, scratched out the CPI as an issue on my paper, but I think that's an issue we will be talking about. I, I, I know the compass budget we need to take an action on. And that we do that, uh, the, the reinstatement of the funds that were changed, and there are not that many, but there's a few. An update, I think, on the stormwater drainage issue, yes, ma'am? Yeah, there's nothing new, I'm just summarizing what we need to talk about, in my opinion. I'm just saying the CPI compass, although a little ghost scratched out CPI, but I think that was a mistake. The compass, the infrastructure, uh, I think there's public information things we could talk about, but... talk about, but we don't have a ton of things that we're going to fight over, right? So I think...
20% cross-the-board reduction.
Mothball, we're going to mothball the fleet, but remember, this is live, guys. I think that with those issues that we know are going to be needed to be debated and discussed and voted on, I think we could probably do those on the 14th, there's known whereabouts, so we can get this budget down the road and, and lower the stress level of Pauline.
It's about the 12th, 14th, I think we could easily...
Okay. Is that the consensus now? Those of you...
Are you looking for the time to meet, is that what you're...
The 12th, I think it's a time set, isn't it?
Yeah, five to nine.
It's all set.
There is on that agenda, there's also general fund revenue assumptions and CPI presentation by you.
Yes.
And then on the 14th, Mayor Quaker will be recap the future schedule, if it's been scheduled, we could do the 12th. And the 27th, it's just strictly discussion.
But the 12th, we were talking about, I think we can handle it, the 12th, don't you? Or close to it?
Yeah, it's not that, we're looking for sure.
Okay. I would suggest, I think I've got notes on everything, not everything, because I forgot some stuff, I'm sure. Being a, being a baby boomer, close to the end, you know, type forgetful person I am. Yes.
I think you only have to notice the 12th and 14th.
Better than the alternative.
But anyway, I'll start working with the mayor and if you've got any comments, please get them and maybe we can get this kind of wrapped up that night. Other questions? Comments, recommendations, anything missing, forgotten? Steve, you?
I'm good.
You're good?
For now.
For now. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's a move, second.
Second, those opposed, motion carries.